Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Payson City Council meeting for Wednesday, May 2nd, 2018. And again, we did this earlier, we had a work session, but it's five after six. Again, welcome here. We'd like to have Logan Bennett, if you would, give us a prayer, and then Jennifer Valentia. How do you pronounce your last name?
Valencia.
Valencia, Jennifer Valencia will do our plates. So we'll go to the prayer right now if we could.
Dear Heavenly Father, we are thankful for this day. We are thankful that we can gather together as a city council and be able to discuss what we need to, and please bless us that we can all accomplish all that we need the rest of today, and that we can all just have a good day, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Logan.
Jennifer.
All the audience, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, we'll move on to see consent agenda. Council, you've seen the consent agenda, we have six different items. Is there any discussion on that consent agenda?
I just have a couple things I want, if we just want to read through what the park tax money we're going to approve. Is that okay, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. As everybody knows, the citizens passed the park tax, which goes to park recreation, or parks and art and recreation, last year, and it's about one cent on every $10. Goes into some of these items in the city. So this is what we're passing today, is that we're going to give the award, the Payson Community Band $100, the Huey Sharps Performing Center $7,400, the Payson City Corral $7,590, people per serving Petite Need $5,000, and the Payson Community Theater $20,000. Then we're also going to use the money for building, oh, what are they called? What kind of pickleball courts over in the memorial park with the basketball court? So we're going to use $150,000 this year for that, and $150,000 next year. We're going to take money out of our general fund, so we start right, well, not $150,000, so we start those right away. So you look for this money being put to good use.
Ryan, you missed one of the mural projects.
Oh.
$2,000.
You know what, it's not on here, so we need to add it.
Oh, it's on my form, I had it with the group.
So, not on the consent agenda, so needs to be added to that. So, it was $2,000 for mural projects, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we can go ahead and verbally say that's on that list, and that the committee can consider.
Yeah, I have it, my consent agenda. Oh, it's on there.
Oh, okay, good.
What I'm reading doesn't...
It's on the resolution.
Oh, but, okay, I just pulled up the...
Okay, it is on the resolution.
Just quickly, too, I'll run through these, I think it's important. Approval of the Minutes is what we're doing in the consent agenda. Also, National Police Week, proclamation, May 13th through the 19th of this year. Councilwoman Hewlett had just done the park tax. Resolution, law of consent for single event permit, that's for Utah. Agreement with the travel story for the Mount Niebo scenic byway, and then the ordinance reaffirmed the DAE annexation. So those are the items. Any discussion on those councils? Okay, then we can enter...
You know what I said already?
Yes, that's fine. Duly noted. So I'm ready for a motion.
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Second. Okay, this calls for a roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Hyatt.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Moving on to D, petitions. We'll open the public forum. Anyone can speak on items that are not on the agenda. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes or less if possible. So we'll go left hand. Anyone would like to come up in public forum? Okay, not seeing anybody wanting to take advantage of that, we'll move on to number two. Ms. Payson? We're ready for you. And attendance.
Mayor and council, I'd like to introduce you to our queen, Ms. Megan Hall, and first attendant, Noel Wall, and second attendant, Aubrey Schmidt. And I just wanted to give them just a few seconds, introduce themselves, and a little bit about themselves. And there's their advisor, Renee.
Okay, so my name is Megan Hall? Wait, I'm not gonna say her name. First of all, before she starts, I would just like to challenge the council and the mayor, these girls are very busy during Labor Day, really busy during Labor Day, and the main events, but if we can just find any way at all to utilize them throughout the year, let me know, and we will make sure they're there to serve our city. And they're a good group of girls. Go for it.
So I'm Megan Hall. I'm going to talk about my platform for a second. So my platform is entitled "Laughter and Love After Loss." It helps with the kids and adolescents in our community when they lose a loved one. I want to be able to bring resources here in Payson, so they know where to go when they are struggling through that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Noel Wall, I'm the first attendant. I'm a cheerleader at Payson High School, and I'm super excited to serve Payson.
I'm Aubrey Schmidt, I'm second attendant, and I, too, am really excited to serve Payson. I love this city.
As I mentioned some councils ago, I did attend a Ms. Payson event, and we are very lucky to have these young ladies represent us. They are the cream of the crop, so thank you, young ladies. Okay, we'll move on to the presentation by the Payson High School regarding street banners. Might may mention, I have listened to this presentation some time ago, very much supportive of this project, and hopefully the council will as well.
Hi, Logan Bennett. I am a junior, oh, sorry, I'm the junior class representative, I'm the student body president for next year. So we wanted, so we've talked about and presented, as he stated, that we are looking and interested in providing banners, street banners, throughout our community to represent Payson High School, Payson City, and UVU, as they come into town. Just a few things, just for why we like, why we want it, is just that, for one, it shows the community support. There's stuff in Payson, but there's not a lot in Payson. We've got to be able to support each other in all that we do. The high school loves to support other groups and businesses and stuff like that, and just so in being able to support each other through all, just throughout the community. It shows, it helps us show some school spirit, especially like throughout homecoming week and different traditional events, through in the high school and in the community alike, we can just show spirit, and then we can also show pride. Whenever people come through other towns, they know that they're supporting the local high school, they know they're supporting higher education with UVU, and they're also supporting the city, to show that what we are made of. And then, like I said, support higher education, because we could involve, and I mean, most likely we involve UVU, because they will be in town. So Salem Hills has these little flags in their businesses and along their streets. They have them hanging on their lampposts and just in their businesses. So at Payson High School, we're trying to get these for businesses, but I think we are trying to go for a banner light on the, on the street poles. So these are what they have in Orem right now. So we would just replace some of them, each, every other would be one Payson High School, one Payson City, and we're just trying to go for a way to provide funding through the city, and UVU, and UO School District alike. And then I went around, I like making videos, so I went around and asked different businesses and talked about if they would support it, and put their thoughts on the dock, so here's this.
Yeah.
Yeah, looks like there's a short word.
Can you have somebody do ad lib, ad lib for you?
I think these are all saying I'll donate $1,000.
That's what I heard.
Can you wait to lay the microphone on top of the speaker? On the computer.
Well, I just wanted to ask about probably 10 to 15, 20 businesses, and they were just talking about how they'd love to see the community support, and especially the flower shop, they would, they said they talk about talking, I mean, sorry, working with all these high schoolers in, throughout prom and homecoming, and all these different dances, so they would love to, one, wrap a flag in their window, but also to see it in the community, because she thinks that they, that we should all support each other, and it was really good what she said. And so, so there's the designs again, and then, so we just got this from UVU, what they use for Orem. So these are the price breakdowns, so if you just want to look through these, and then there's the subtotal and everything. So if you need to go back and forth, you can tell me, and I can, of course.
Council, you have any questions for?
How many flags would this be?
So you can, so they have different kinds, so, let's see, so they usually got about, so from the Orem ones, they got 75, the UVU ones, they got 75, I think, yeah. No, just kidding, they got 300 and 200, so that's 500. So we wouldn't need that many, but it just, whatever we decide we would like to do. And then they also, it looks like they got some smaller ones, which 50 of each of those, and then they talked about installment, installment, and different stuff like that. And then we just thought about putting them, just leading them to the high school, because UVU will go on the other side of the freeway at the top, by McDonald's, so we thought kind of like between the two, and also because it crosses Utah Avenue, and then if we wanted to, we could do like entering the other, down by Walmart, too, on 800 South. So then, yeah, if you need to go back to any of the other prices, just let me know.
So all those things, we've got some time, all those things can be worked out?
Yeah.
And in conjunction with UVU, I see a representative here, would you like to let us know what your thoughts are?
Sure.
I brought a sample of what we have in Orem, so if you'd like to touch it and feel it, it's a, woo! It's a big banner, and it's a Sombrel material, the vinyl we found, it wasn't very, it just sent up to the wind very well.
Yeah.
We had some mild ones that we put up, and the same week, we had 80 mile an hour winds, and they were all trashed.
Yep.
These don't tear at all, which is really nice. So we have 175 in Orem right now, and we're working with BYU to get some in Provo as well. We have a campus in Provo at the airport, and BYU wants to put some in Orem, so we're working with them to get some more banners put up throughout the city. We have an agreement with the city, and maybe this is something that can be worked out later, where we, where we paid for the banners, and they pay for the labor to put them up, take them down, do all that stuff, so that can be all worked out later. But if you'd like to see this, let me know, but we're excited to be in Payson, and looking forward to working with Payson High School, this is a great project that Logan brought forward, and taking the bridge up.
Thank you. Colors match.
See banners from UVU.
So you say you provide the banners, are you providing for the fixtures, too, or is the city providing fixtures and labor, and you're just providing the banners?
It's been both. We've gone a few phases, and the first phase, we paid for everything except for the install of the banners. The most recent phase, the city paid for the brackets to be put up, so it's just, it's depending on what the city wants to do, and what funding is available.
And when you're doing the banners, are you talking about UVU does the Payson High School banners and the UVU banners, or you're just doing the UVU banners, and Payson High Schools got to come up with their own, or?
So all of our banners in Orem are co-branded, so there are, there are some that are just UVU, and there are some that are just Orem, but pretty much everything's okay, so.
Well, the colors are looking the same, what if we put it on one side and the opposite side?
Yeah, we talked about doing, like, co-branding, like they said, with Orem, I'd switch it out with Payson City, and then switch another one out for Payson High School, so it'd go Payson High School, Payson City, but matched with UVU as well and all of them, and then one straight UVU. As you notice, all the other ones, they had like green and white, and then white, greens, they really correlated.
It'll work out the designs, all that stuff later, for sure.
Wonderful. I also asked Ron Grump, since these will be put on our, on our utility poles, is that something that is, can happen?
Yes.
Do they already have the brackets on some of them?
No.
Okay, well, we're excited to work with UVU and have the campus here.
We're excited to be in Payson.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to number four, staff reports and council staff. Any staff that would like to come up and address us in the public?
Mayor and council, I am excited to remind you that this Friday will be our Viva El Mariachi. I said it much better this time than last time. So it's this Friday, and the concert, they did a dress rehearsal, and it really is going to be fantastic. Great dancing, lots of fun costumes, costume changes, a lot of trumpets and the mariachi music, and it's really going to be a really fun event. It's free, so there's no excuse that you're here on Friday. You all need to come to the Petite Need Amphitheater. So there will be food trucks, merchandise trucks, so it really will be a fun, a fun cultural event. Please go.
What time is it again?
Seven until nine, and there's a short intermission, that way everyone can go and shop at the, the food trucks.
And where again will it be at?
The Petite Need Amphitheater, and it's free, so you can come.
Leaks in the grass this year? Leaks in the grass, and the water meter, it broke last year.
Mayor and council, in public, just a few updates from the Recreation Department. We have been hosting the school track meets last week and this week, and we'll have one next week as well. That's been fun to have 10 elementary schools coming in from Santaquin as well as the Payson areas. We are getting the pool ready to go. Our first inspection will be Monday. We're also starting our first lifeguarding classes and instructions on Monday to get ready for Memorial Weekend for the opening. You've probably noticed, the adult softball programs have started this week, the youth programs have started practicing, and will start games next week as well. And then we have a lot of summer programs and camps that you can sign up for, from tumbling and gymnastics and cheer to other camps that are going on. We'll have a basketball camp with the high school coaches teaching and other programs through the summer, so come join our recreation programs. Any questions?
I have a question for you and Tracy. Has it been easier to hire people since we raised ranges, or has it still been difficult?
It's still difficult, but the ones we hire sure appreciate it, you know, especially like the returning ones, or the ones that have been there quite a few years, have really, you know, it's been nice, and so, maybe I'd answer, we're retaining more, they're not looking as much.
Some of our positions, we've had more applicants on a couple of our positions, for sure.
Thanks, Carl.
Mayor and council, as you've noticed, the PI system is on. We had about five or six leaks as soon as we turned it on, which at least two or three of them were bored through by the private utility companies, so they did them in the winter, so we didn't know they had done them until obviously the water got in there, but so far, we're just running off the canyon water. We don't have any high line water yet, so we made it, and with the rain, we think it's been good, but it's supposed to get back in the 80s again this next week, so I'm sure that will start up in the demand, so hopefully we'll be able to keep up with that, and we'll try to keep up, you know, with high line on that, so. We're going to remove all that material, the dirt out there, Connect Mountain, that'll start Monday, so Kent's guys, and that'll be out there, and some of the help from the other public works departments trying to run trucks and stuff, so. We're all over the place, but if you have any questions, let me know, that's kind of a quick update.
When's High Line going to fill the canal?
I have no idea. When they get 60 CFs, acid orders, it's all they'll tell us, so I don't have a clue when that date will be.
They're pushing for the eight, but we have to, they have to have that much to bring it down.
Yeah, so there's no firm date, so, I don't know.
Any questions more for Tracy? Thank you.
I guess I'll do a report, then. Mayor and council, a couple things, let's see, on the golf end, we hosted the, I guess, are we region seven now? I mean, the region's changed now once a year, but I think it's region seven, girls' golf tournament today, so we had all the high schools up there, and we got them in right before the rain, so that was exciting.
It'll be region 10.
Region 10?
Payson and Spanish work.
Yes, it's Payson-Spanish, so it's a region 10. Okay, there you go, region 10. Bathrooms, I don't know if you guys have peeked in there, next council meeting, then we'll be done, so it's, yeah. I'm here to tell you that when we tore out the walls, there were five different, it went from tile to plaster to wood to stone, and probably the original stone from Lake Bonneville. And I have pictures to document all of this, so.
You didn't want a hat on?
It was unbelievable, the stuff in there, but they're coming along, literally, probably towards the end of this week, to the first of next week, we'll have them finished, so.
So they're bigger.
The bathrooms are bigger?
Yeah, you've taken all the, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, the walls, exactly, at least, yeah, yeah, exactly, so the bathrooms are, are bigger. I'm like, oh no, were we supposed to do an addition to it? But yeah, if you want to peek in there, we're just finishing up tile, we're going to grab tomorrow, so. RV Park, Kent's doing just a great job, they've been up there, and we're almost through the sewer, then we'll get Ron's guys up there to pull electrical and water, so that's coming along, looking much better, so.
Did you design those bathrooms as the Madonna Inn down in California, or not?
Yes, that was inspiration, for sure. Doug, you had a question?
Oh, I just, like, between the soccer fields and the Greenwich condominiums?
Uh huh.
There's this huge pile of branches that just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Are we having a bonfire at some point in time?
Yeah, there's going to be a, Carl was going to do a weenie roast.
I'm all for a bonfire, but...
Yeah.
It's done. Yeah, they burned it.
Oh, it is burnt? Okay.
Yeah, we had a...
I just wasn't sure if it's like neighbors, or...
No, we got a permit from Stream Operation that we could clean out the driveway, just that, and they put it there, so we could, and then we had to give them a...
Help with the fire situation, and so, take a field away from them.
And on the fire situation, we probably took 100 phone calls at the course yesterday about the controlled burn above us, because everyone thought we were on fire, but that was actually the Forest Service, so. Any other questions?
Tracy, I appreciate the work you're doing, and as we've talked in the past, whatever work we do, we want to do it right and do it classy, so appreciate that very much.
Thank you, and I want to thank Ron's guys, he really built me up. I had an electrician last Friday who got called off, and I called Ron and says, we need this, we need an electrician, so Ty came down and Ron, and they, they really helped us out, so, you know how if you get off schedule with these, you know, a tile guy, it could be three, four, or five weeks, so, but thank you, and thanks to Ron and his guys.
The library.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to update you on our, we started our South County Library Cooperative yesterday, so we've had several applicants from Santaquin that have come and joined our library, and we're excited to see how that goes. We also just were awarded three grants that we applied for through Utah State Library. One, Emily Bennett, our, my teen spark, did for community recreation kits, we're really excited, it's kind of an out of the box one, we're going to let people check out kayaks and paddle boards and telescope, yeah, two telescopes and metal detectors, and just some things to get them, we want to get them out in the community, get them up to Four Bay or wherever we want them to go.
Do you have, like, information, because you're pretty good at putting out stuff about the library that I can share?
We can't actually start purchasing for it till the first part of June, but yes, we will get some information out, and we're going to, we're going to need to work with legal a little bit on some of that, but there's a couple libraries that have done the kayaks and the paddle boards, and it's been, it's been great. We're excited to get that involvement with the community. Also, we got one for story kits, our children's librarian did that one, and we're also getting mobile hotspots and laptops that we can check out to people who need them, to take them home and use them at home. So we're excited, and then we're also starting our, preparing for our summer reading program, and this year we're going all online, so come on in and sign up for summer reading, last week of May. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor and city council, communities that care, Payson and Santaquin held our annual prescription take back event this last weekend. We took in almost 73 pounds of prescription drugs, and Santaquin took in 55. We, between our two communities, we were like the top takers, and then when we hold these prescription take back events, we also get to give the DEA all of the prescription drugs that we had collected in our drop box for the last six months, they will take them and dispose of them for us. So our police department did that, and so did Santaquin, so I think we had a really successful event. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, don't usually come up for these ones, but I thought the chamber needs to report to you, we've got some great things going on.
Appreciate that, Jane.
And pass these down, so each of you will take one of those, please. First report, April, we held our general membership meeting, presented our new membership plans and some things that we're tweaking and changing just to continue growing and building our business community, so that's the small brochure there. This one, we're really excited this year, we're presenting that to new businesses, existing businesses. We had a good turnout, we had some great collaboration for our business meeting, and we were excited to add a couple new businesses for, from that event as well. So just to kind of give you a total so far, a recap of 2017, we added a total of 22 new businesses. So far, for just 2018, we've added 18 new businesses, and just from the new ambassador program that we've started, we've already added six businesses from that, so. program that we've started, we've already added six businesses from that. So I wanted to recap a little bit of our ambassador program for you. This is one thing we've been working on for several years and are kind of just getting it rolled out now, is each of our board members has taken on some new challenges to go visit at least two new businesses each month, whether they're new or existing businesses, and invite them to chamber events, share with them what we're doing. Our community events, our shop local events, so many different things. So our focus is changing, and that's kind of good. We're focusing less on some of the community events and trying to be that activities committee because we're not, and really be that builder of what's in our community. How can we help keep residents here and not send them to Provo? Payson and Santaquin have everything you need here. I can almost guarantee that. And if not, we're going to find those businesses and bring them here. So that's really our goal. I've given you a copy of our budget that we approved yesterday at our board meeting and wanted to review that if you had any additional questions. We do want to recognize Mike Hardy. He's not here, but he's a huge advocate for our ambassador program and has taken time out of retirement. He's actually helping us several hours every week, visit businesses and be that ambassador with a different board member and get to know what we have in our communities. And we hope each of you take advantage of the fun things that are going on and come see what businesses are here. What questions can I answer?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, I think you guys have done a great job. But I would like to see a profit loss for last year and a balance sheet.
Okay.
Because that was part of agreement last year, quarterly, where we're going to receive those. So if you could get those to the council, I'd appreciate that.
So we apologize it took a little bit longer to get that implemented. We had some changes, as you know, with some of our directors and our team. So new programs come in and new changes that some of us aren't as familiar with, QuickBooks and other areas, but we've had some great training. So yes, we can update that for you. This is a very conservative budget. As you can see, there's areas, we know we are bringing in more business revenue than just one core member each month. And that's done on purpose. As we continue to grow, that money is going back into development of the chamber and bringing more businesses to our community and working hand in hand with our economic committee. And what you see as a goal, we want to see that as well. We want to align those. And I think that's more what we're wanting to do with our Payson and Santaquin city chambers as well. So good question. Anything else I can answer?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your report, Jade. Any other staff members? Not, we'll move on to council report, starting with Councilwoman Hyde. Do you have anything?
We don't. I couldn't go to that conference.
Yeah, I was sad I couldn't go to the conference. Would have been better than spending time at doctor's offices. Just, some people have asked about it. There's thousands of goldfish in Maple Lake. Like the lake is orange, there are so many. And I reached out to the Forest Service and they are working with the Division of Wildlife Services to figure something out. But as a side note, don't put your pets in the outdoors where they can destroy the natural habitat. But there are thousands. If you want to go see orange water, just go up to Maple Lake. If you want to pet fish, go take it.
Goldfish in your pond, go get some.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Carter?
I don't have anything other than I appreciate Janine, and I forget the other...
Sarah.
Sarah Levitt, sorry, for the run that they had, that they sponsored. I forget the official name.
Pay it forward.
Pay it forward.
And it's all Sarah.
And it was all Sarah then. Okay, Janine.
I was just...
Not Janine, everybody, just Sarah Levitt. Anyway, I appreciate all the work that she went to. I thought I was going to be a lot of help, and I got down there about ten to seven that morning. And Sarah had all of her family there. They had everything set up already, and they did so much work. And they had like, how many register? Eleven hundred?
Eleven hundred, eleven fifty, I think.
Yeah. It was amazing. So we appreciate Sarah and all her hard work. And I just appreciate all of the city employees and the work that they do. Dave and I made a trip out to the landfill. And Dave, every time he goes out there, he comments the same thing. This place doesn't look the same. It's just so organized and cleaned and everything. So we really appreciate all the city employees.
I'd like to echo that as well. It's probably one of the best-run landfills in the state. Also, you have nothing? Okay, Councilman, nothing. Okay, great. We'll move on to, do we have any scouts in attendance? I haven't noticed any, any scouts that would like to recognize. Okay, having none, we'll move on to the CTC Mayor Youth Recognition Award. Okay, Rebecca, is that right?
So do you have four awards? So we'll start with Darwin Fackrell from Payson Junior High. If he's here, could please come up? And then, so, and then his teachers say he is a very hardworking student and always willing to help those around him when they need his help. He has progressed to a long way since entering the class two years ago, and he's doing a great job. Another teacher says that Darwin has worked hard over the last few months to stay on top of his work. He is a motivated self-learner. He is good at asking questions and asking for help. Congrats, Darwin. Our next one is Miranda Goodworth from Payson High School. She's here. So her teachers say that she's an excellent student athlete at Payson High School. This year, she was the captain of the girls varsity soccer team and a member of the school's hope squad. In addition to that, she is currently taking three college classes and is a member of the Chamber Orchestra where she plays the cello. Congrats, Miranda. Okay, we have our Mount Nevo representative for the month of April. She was unable to attend last month, so we're going to give her an award today. Could we have Maddie T. Hart, please come? Her teacher said, one of the things I appreciate most about Maddie is her dedication. I know that when I give her a task, Maddie will do her best. Maddie is creative and thoughtful, and I can always count on her to help others in class. She's a fantastic student. Instead, Maddie is a very hardworking, conscientious, and polite student. She's always willing to help others and never complains, but instead gets to work and does a good job of balancing all of the many things she's involved in in learning her class. Maddie is the heart of the FFA at Mount Nevo Junior. She has taken the initiative to effectively lead our junior high members to success. She's highly dedicated to everything she puts her mind to and finds meaning in all the things she learns. Can we have Stephanie Zavala come up, please? Stephanie is an extraordinary student who works hard, is kind to others, and goes above and beyond. I never have to worry about Stephanie giving less than a hundred percent while she is in class. And it is clear that Stephanie strives to help others, be a good example to all those around her. Stephanie is a bright, positive, and outgoing young lady. She is the Latinos in Action class president and takes on her role with great leadership. She participates in plenty of community, in plenty of community service activities and always represents Mount Nevo Junior High extremely well. Stephanie is an amazing student. She never backs away from a challenge and works hard on everything she does. If things don't go as planned at first, she sticks with it and makes sure she learns what she needs to and accomplish her goals. Congratulations.
Young men and women, to shake hands with the council.
And parents, you're welcome to come up front and take pictures.
Okay, we'll move on, Jade. I guess you get to come back out. This will be for the business of the month.
This one's always much more fun to do. Just kidding. I'm excited today to represent, to share with you our May Business of the Month. It's not hard why this one was chosen. And we had a tiebreaker. In many years, we haven't had a tiebreaker. And a tie break came in and within about, I don't know, ten minutes of the tiebreaker, he had sixty percent of the votes winning. So Lou and Lou's Barbershop on Main Street. And I think many of us know him and know what a great, great member of our community he is. And if you go down Main Street, and that's a staple business that's been there for so many years and represents Payson and many fantastic things. Has been a strong supporter of the chamber and a member of our board for many, many years. So I've learned great things from Lou and I'm very excited to present our May Business of the Month. Lou. Would you like to say a few words?
I'll just thank the chamber for this honor. It happens to fall on our twenty-second anniversary in Payson, on Monday, only twenty-two years in Payson. And we enjoyed serving the community and the business here.
My name is Sri. I work there, too. I'm cold.
Okay, we'll move on to Acton Item E. This will be a public hearing, vacation of Creekside Subdivision, Flat B, Lot Twenty-Nine, and the Maples at Brookside, PRD amended, Flat C and D located at eight eighty-one West, thirteen fifty South, and public hearing on the final plat for the Creekside Subdivision amended, Flat C located again at eight eighty-one West, thirteen fifty South. So Daniel, I believe you're going to present this?
So this one is continued from last council session, so it should look familiar. I'm not going to go over really everything unless we have members of the public that would like to speak, and we need a little bit more factual basis. As you recall, we did have a public hearing last time, but we still needed it to be noticed to a few more non-individuals. So we're talking about eight eighty-one West, thirteen fifty South. As Mayor mentioned, vacating existing public utility easements, and they're establishing a new plat. And I'll just come a little further down. And I think one of these last slides will really show what we got. So the existing, the existing plat shows this lot ending right here. Over a period of years, some parcels were sold south of it and recently have been purchased and were combined with this parcel right here. So it has one serial number. And rather than amend the entire subdivision to accommodate this change of property lines, the applicant decided to create a new plat, so Plat C in Creekside, which would just be a one lot, one lot plat. And that's this one right here. One outstanding item, that's, so one item remaining. You can see right here, this is where it originally ended. That's where the public utility easement was. The original lot had a public utility easement like this. The new public utility easement will go out here. We were told from at least one provider that they already have utilities here, and so that easement cannot be vacated or their facilities would need to be relocated to the new easement. And so that still needs to be finalized, how that's going to be accommodated, either by remaining or moved. And staff's confident we can work with the applicant and the utility provider to resolve that. So that's about it. We need to make sure all members of the public have a chance to speak. And if we do have questions from the public, I can go into more depth. But I believe council and the mayor has already caught up on this one. So again, I guess today, we also need to have the, well, not recommendations, but the approval. So that's either to approve with the conditions from the staff before and the understanding that there's some items that need to be finished or remanded back to staff before. We can deny it as well if it doesn't meet the ordinance. And that's for both of them, two different motions. So to vacate out of Creekside B and then to establish that new final plat.
Okay, Daniel. So after hearing that presentation, Council, we need to open a public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion. We open the public hearing.
We have a second. Okay, we have a second. Who goes for a vote, the voice vote? Aye.
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 Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Those that would like to speak, please come to the mic, state their name and their address, and speak clearly if they would. Try to limit your comments to three minutes or less if possible. Okay, seeing that there's no one that would like to come up, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, as I understand, this would, this open public hearing would ought to be on both subjects, but we need two different motions for, one for each one. So if you're ready to do a motion on the first one, anybody?
Can we put this in one motion or does that actually be two separate ones?
That's what I mean, go two separate.
Good. Go ahead.
The first one?
I'd like to make a motion that we vacate Plat, Lot Twenty-Nine and Plat B of the Maples from that subdivision. Did I get that right?
Maples at Brookside?
Oh.
You had it on the screen already to read and then you pulled it out. Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the vacation of Creekside Subdivision, Plat B, Lot Twenty-Nine, and the Maples at Brookside, PRD amended, Plat C and D. I'll second it.
Second, okay. Roll call.
We don't need findings on this one. It's the next one that needs findings.
Aye, correct.
Okay, roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, I'll entertain that motion on the second one of the public hearing.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the final plat for Creekside Subdivision, Plat C with staff conditions.
Okay.
I'll second that.
You have a second? Okay, roll call vote again, starting with Councilwoman Hyde.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to number three. Request to apply the RMO-1 Two-Family Residential Overlay Zone to construct a twin home on the northwest corner of the intersection of seven hundred the northwest corner of the intersection of 700 South and 400 West. And this other one, number four, is connected to it, is that right? Number four preliminary plan and final plat for the Quelcon subdivision, plat B located on the northwest corner of the intersection of 700 South and 400 West. Daniel, go ahead and announce.
Okay. That's Quelcon for our quality inspection.
Quelcon.
Okay, Quelcon. Okay, so we have that introduction. So here's our locator map, 700 South and 400 West. All zones, single family in the area, R19, so residential, one family, that does this perfect lot. That zone allows for an overlay for duplexes or twin homes and we'll get to that here in a second. So you may recognize from, I believe it was last fall, plat A, this is not, oh, okay. It's not my updated one. So there's an exist, I had another slide on here, but there's an existing single-family home right here and this was all one parcel and this was divided. So that existing single-family home was on lot one and lot two was a vacant parcel. So that was the first step and that's been completed. And now the applicant has come in to subdivide this parcel to allow, to accommodate a twin home. So with that overlay, you could either do a duplex, the difference being that if that would remain as one single lot, or a twin home, which divides this lot into. So we have lot 1A and lot 1B here. With the R19, the minimum lot size for a twin home is 5,400 square feet and you see right here that both lots are above that. So he's been working with staff and been completing the red lines and you can see here the final plat with the public utility easement and then the access easement as well. There's a hill right here, this is going downhill on this side and the access would be right here to come in to access both lots. So code compliance, it's staff's position that needs to be met, all the requirements and the ordinance. And the proposed homes are similar to these homes that have been previously built in design, in materials. One difference being a garage that would be right here in the middle. That would create a shared wall between the two units. Then here's the elevation, so you can see that's consistent with the drawing that's been submitted. So we have the front elevation and the sides. Then the existing neighborhood, the home on the north side is this one right here. And you can see that what's submitted is decently consistent with what we see in the surrounding neighborhood. There are some duplexes and twin homes, but not adjacent to this property. But you can see with the material, what's submitted would be consistent with the environment. So today we are approving both those preliminary and final plans and then also, or preliminary plan and final plat and also the RMO1 overlay to allow for this twin home. And do we have any questions about that?
So they had a public hearing and the planning zoning, right? They were, so they felt a public hearing on this. Planning commission, yeah.
Yeah, so planning commission's recommendation was approved.
But there was no comments, right?
No comments.
Correct.
Isn't this the neighborhood where they were, well, maybe within a three-block radius that they were concerned about the number of duplexes and duplexes and seems like we had an issue probably a couple blocks to the south.
Jill, do you know who that might be referring to?
I think the Clayton's came in.
Oh.
Does that sound familiar to you?
Yeah, I know that there was a lot of feedback on the one on Third North and Third East. But I can't think of any others.
I haven't heard from any neighbors about this.
Neighbors.
The neighbor has contacted me, I believe, any neighbors, like the Jill either.
Sounds like we had the public.
And it was noticed.
Okay. Any further discussion? This will also take two motions, so we'll go ahead and I'll entertain a motion to do number three. I'll make a motion that we apply the RMO1 two-family residential overlay zone to construct twin homes on parcel 81230029 on the northwest corner of the intersection of 700 South and 400 West. Is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay. This calls for a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. I'll entertain a second motion for number four.
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary and final plat for the Quelcon subdivision, plat B with staff conditions. Second?
Okay, it's been seconded. Roll call vote is also mandatory, starting with Councilman.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. Going on to number five, preliminary plan and final plat approval for phase three, one through three of the villages at Arrowhead Park located west of Arrowhead Trail at approximately 1,500 North consisting of 50 single-family dwelling lots. Okay, Jill, I guess, are you doing this one?
Yes, I'm just getting the presentation going.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for the introduction, Mayor. So as the mayor had mentioned, the applicant is requesting approval for phases one, one through three of the villages at Arrowhead Park development. So just to give you an idea of where that's located in relation to existing development in Payson, this is the North Main, I-15 interchange located here. This is 600 North, 700 North and continuing north along Arrowhead Trail. You have Salem City Limits in this location and of course, Arrowhead Trail continues into Spanish Ford City. So the property that we're looking at here is about, it's nearly 100 acres that the applicant controls and has put together some conceptual layouts for the entire property.
How far is he from the Payson city boundaries? Is it?
So he's currently in the city, but from existing development and existing utilities, it's about a quarter of a mile, correct?
Not, not that way. How far?
We're on the boundary.
You're, you're on the boundary. Where is the Salem City boundary?
Oh, yes, so right here, yes.
2200 West is the Salem.
So this will be sharing a boundary with Salem City boundaries.
Okay.
That is correct. And they have master plans, the Berenson property here, and they've got some other industrial uses that are, that are going immediately north, specifically the lift or the sewer treatment plant that was going there. So.
Sorry, following suit.
Okay, so just as a little bit of background, and I don't want to bore everybody, but I know that we do have some new council members as of January, so just give a little bit of background. So when this property was annexed back in 2003, it was initiated by Payson City because we had an industrial user that was looking at locating, that needed a large tract of land for this area. We were competing with some other communities to bring this industrial user there. In the end, they went to Grandville instead of Payson. So, but anyway, we had annexed all of the property out into this area and so it's part of the North Payson annexation. So there's a specific plan and annexation agreement that was developed in 2003 that identified the land uses that would be appropriate in this planning area. So the density range for this particular parcel that the applicant's looking at is a range from 632 units up to 838. So recognizing that the applicant's current concept plan is about 650, they're on the lower end of that range and the city council has seen multiple concept plans from the applicant. So the applicant is required to meet the specific plan requirements as far as use and densities and infrastructure and everything that's included in that plan. After that industrial user went away, the property owners in this area started exploring options of do we want to stay in Payson, do we want to go back to the county, do we want to annex into Salem? Anyway, ultimately, they had decided they wanted to disconnect from Payson and so the property was taken back out into the unincorporated area and then they've been working with Salem on development in their community. And then applicant has been interested in this development for quite some time. We've had a lot of conversations with Mr. Harvard over the years, but the market is ready now and so he is ready to move forward. So just as, okay, so there's this gap. I'm going to go back two slides. So as you see, we've got this big gap of property between existing residential neighborhoods and this property here. So there's about 750 acres that the LDS church owns in this area that is used as Bamberga Ranch. And so even though there is not any development anticipated, at this point in time, there has been, that property was annexed into Payson City and there has been a planned community, a zone plan that's been put together for that particular property to show how that property could be developed if and when the LDS church decides to go from a ranching operation to development. And so as, they don't have any immediate plans right now, I'm not announcing anything. This is just a planning effort for them to say, as, as things change over time, this is how it could be laid out. So we did take that into consideration, you know, as we've been working with applicant on these conceptual layouts, showing that we do want something that's very consistent with the other zoning or the anticipated zoning in that area for the other properties adjacent. Took into consideration Salem across the street and then also taking into consideration the Bamberga Ranch and these residential areas and the densities that were vested at the time of annexation.
Where does the new interchange sit on that colorful map?
So.
Is it drawn in the way?
About, about in the location that it's showing here. Now, when this plan was prepared, it was just an idea of having a new interchange there. And so we, the EIS study hadn't even commenced. And so, you know, this was just a shot in the dark of, you know, this is where it could potentially be.
Doesn't look like it's too far off from what.
But it's not too far off. But knowing that, we didn't know if there would be another interchange in that location, the consultant that put together this plan, they also have another plan showing that if an interchange is not located there, of how that area would be developed. Of course, you know, the densities would be significantly less, but it, and it's mostly residential. But recognizing that the EIS is nearing completion and that there will be an interchange there in the future, we did want to show those other uses that could be accommodated there. So land use and density. So this is the latest conceptual layout that has been reviewed by the city council at previous work sessions. The applicant is just interested in this middle part right now, so that's what we'll be talking about tonight, but just wanted to show you an overview of what was allowed with this specific plan, what's allowed in the area, and then how they have laid out their property here to accommodate the densities as proposed. But again, the applicant is just looking at the single-family dwellings there in the center at this point in time. So there are a lot of unique features on this site. There are wetlands, you have the Bear Creek channel that runs through the property. So there are a lot of extension of utility services. I mean, you saw the distance between existing neighborhoods and this site, so there's a lot of off-site improvements that need to be done. They're also requesting the postponement of the connection to the pressurized irrigation system with these first phases, relocation of transmission lines. So there is a transmission line that follows on the west side or parallels the west side of Arrowhead Trail that will need to be accommodated. A regional lift station, there isn't any sewer facilities out here, so there will need to be a lift station installed and a force main to, back to the existing gravity fed line. Off-site improvements, that's just a, that's a continuation there. Roadway improvements, Arrowhead Trail is a, is an arterial status street, so it is a wider street to accommodate all that traffic generated from the surrounding communities. The applicant has had to do a lot of legwork in getting the different irrigation companies in the area. This is a new area, a new planning area for us, so we're trying to get familiar with some of the different players in this particular area, including the irrigation companies. But the applicant has reached out to all of the irrigation companies in the area and has communicated with them to see if it would impact their facilities. Agricultural and animal rights, it has just been used as grazing land in the past. Once subdivision occurs, those animal rights are relinquished and then coordination with Salem City. And we actually have received correspondence from Salem indicating that they have had conversations with the applicant. They're excited to see this project move forward and they're willing to continue work with applicant and Payson City on any shared measures because that road, 2200 West County coordinate, is going to be the division between the two cities. So we need to make sure that we're both comfortable with the cross-section, how many access points on there. There's a lot of things that we need to coordinate with them and so they're willing to continue working with us on that. So phasing plan, it will be completed in phases. As you saw, it's 100 acres, it's a large development, a lot of it's going to depend, you know, on the market and what the market can absorb. But the area that we're looking at now is just the area highlighted or outlined in red there. There's three phases on the map and I'll talk about that again in a minute. So project layout and design, as you can see, shows connections of roads, you know, all the way through. There are several points where it crosses the wetland areas or crosses Bear Creek, you know, and so just showing how we're providing adequate access to not only their properties and it's not shown on here, but making sure that there's adequate access to adjoining properties as well. So phase one through three, the tabulations, it's 50 single-family homes. When the applicant had started this process, they were looking at, or they were looking for approval for phases four and five also, and that's the townhome product that's here. And if you were, if you had a chance to read the planning commission minutes, you may have noticed that there's a lot of discussion about the townhome, RV parking, private roads, narrower streets, all those things. So the applicant has asked that that, any discussion and a decision on those townhomes be postponed there, considering some other, some various changes to that layout that will be coming to you at a subsequent meeting for the townhome product. So items of consideration, these are the things that will, that city council will need to consider tonight, discuss with the applicant and then include it in your, in your motions. So there are a few modifications and waivers that the applicant is requesting. He is asking for a modify, relative to the single-family phases, modified street cross-section for the wetland crossings. The arrangement that they have with Army Corps of Engineers is to limit the impact on the wetlands as much as possible. And so they are showing that there will be a narrow street crossing on those wetland areas. So all other streets throughout the single-family area will be your standard 56-foot right-of-way, 40 feet of asphalt, but as they are crossing those wetland areas, they do narrow. And I do have a cross-section of that, we can look at in just a moment. So waiver of RV parking and storage area, with the lot sizes here, they feel like there would be adequate onsite parking for any of those accessory equipment and that was also the recommendation of the planning commission as to waive it for the single-family neighborhoods. And then they're also looking for a modified no-build area along Bear Creek. So these lots here, they back onto Bear Creek there. We have a requirement that says that no building can occur within 50 feet of the center line of a waterway. And so recognizing that there is a variation or in the elevation between these lots and Bear Creek itself, they are asking for a modified cross-section to allow the access and the overflow to occur on the north side of the channel instead of having that 50 feet on either side. And I've got a cross-section for that as well. Housing product, the applicant has provided some pictures, they're included in your packet of some of the housing product that would be similar to what would be allowed in this neighborhood. The applicant may want to expand on that during his presentation. Phasing plan, as I mentioned, they are proposing to do this in three different phases. We do have a limitation or ordinance that you cannot construct more than 10 units on a single point of ingress and egress. So the concern of staff is the way that they have phased it, is they could potentially, you know, have a builder come in and say, oh, you've reached that 10, you can't have another one because this road isn't connected. The applicant has assured staff that even though they are doing the smaller phases, that they will not request that 11th building permit on either side or either phase there until that connection is made. So that's what we want to address that as well. And then of course, compliance with city regulations. We've been working closely with staff on what those requirements are, any changes that need to be made, and they have responded accordingly to make sure that those requirements are done. There's still some other minor amendments that need to be done, some other design work that needs to be done, but yet a lot of it can't be done until approval has been granted. So here's your modified cross-section for the wetland crossing. And so it does narrow it up, you know, it takes it for, you know, to a 33-foot right-of-way instead of a 56-foot right-of-way. So it does narrow up the lanes a little bit. They are still showing a pedestrian facility on one side of that road.
Add to the request of the Corps of Engineers.
So the Corps of Engineers, they want to limit the impact as much as possible. So they recognize that, you know, we still want to make sure that there's adequate, you know, area for the movement of vehicles and pedestrian, but. area for the movement of vehicles and pedestrian, but they are eliminating the one side of the pedestrian access.
Is five feet as wide as we can go on that sidewalk?
The way that we have it designed now.
Eight to 10 on the bicycle trails and things. I just wonder there if that might be...
They do have trails through, so I guess the sidewalks are still going to, to a certain extent, tie into the trail system, but they do have trails that are proposed throughout this entire development in addition to the sidewalks.
Well, I just, I just, I don't know. I'm not trying to throw a wrench in the whole thing. I'm just kind of curious. If you're running five feet on one side and there's no sidewalk on the other, and how long are these potential land bridges over the wetlands?
Jenna, I wonder, they're not, I mean, I don't know what the measurement is. I mean, we could look at that quickly, but as you can see there, it's just a matter of getting, you know, from one, I mean, and they're even necking it down as soon as...
About 100 feet.
About 100 feet?
About 100 feet.
Okay. Is it, I mean, is it, is five feet adequate for something like that? Are there bike trails going to be on either side of it? Can we bump it to eight? Is that too far?
I think five feet would be adequate. We'll let the applicant address that in his presentation.
I mean, it's already a narrow road, so if somebody stepped off the curb, they're in a 12-foot drive instead of a 36 and 18 foot. So, that's kind of, see what I'm saying? It's normally 18 feet, right, for traveling? What's the roadway?
Well, a traveling, I mean, they're showing here 12 feet, but there are some travellings that would just down to 10.
Right, but on a typical cross-section.
But when you're looking at the connectivity, well, I don't know if this is the best way to show it. I mean, showing that short distance.
Yeah.
I mean, how much, how much pedestrian traffic there really would be in that short stretch before they can get to...
I don't know all of it. That's, I'm just kind of curious.
No, it's a great question and we'll have the applicant address that.
If it's possible, I'd like to see him at eight. If it's not, with what the Corps of Engineers say, we're stuck. You know, I understand.
So, moving on, so here's a lot of food plan that they provided to show on tree-lined streets within the single-family, showing where the wetlands are located, where the Beer Creek corridor is located in relation to those lots. This is a cross-section of the Beer Creek channel. And so, this is what they're asking for the modification for that 50-foot no-build. So, they're showing that you have the, the wrought iron fence for those lots located here. There is a severe drop-off here, you know, to the Beer Creek channel. And they're wanting to enhance the slope and the vegetation along here up to the trail on the north side of Beer Creek and use that as the no-build area, recognizing that there is quite a drop-off on this site. So, there's probably not a need in this area to have an accessway or a trail corridor in order to get in and maintain the channel. It could be done by this slope here on the north side instead of having to get in there on that steep slope. So, the phasing plan, as I mentioned, you know, our concern was just the 10 units on one, a single point of ingress and egress. That would be included in the development agreement. We could continue to work with the applicant on that to make sure that this connection happens in a way that it does not delay any building permits or construction of homes. So, here's some housing that they have provided. Would be typical houses that you would find in this single-family dwelling neighborhood. Here's the housing. And then, as far as approval process, so the required approvals are preliminary plan, including the modifications that I went over briefly. So, at this time, we're looking at density engineering, housing product, the modification and waivers. Now, final plat, we had included in the staff report a request for preliminary and final. As staff has completed another review and preparation of this meeting, there are several things that still need to be done in order for final plat approval to be granted. So, staff is recommending to the city council that we look at just granting preliminary plan approval tonight. We'll continue working with the applicant and bring the final plat at a subsequent meeting. Also, the development agreement. And then, because there are a lot of off-site improvements, and this will be done at a future date as well, but there will be a lot of other property owners that will benefit from the extension of those utilities. And so, the applicant has indicated an interest in having an extension of utility services agreement in place. So, as those other properties connect on, he can receive some reimbursement for those improvements. So, public input, recommendation and decision. Public hearing was conducted at the planning commission. Copy of the minutes were included in your packet. The planning commission, after a lot of discussion, they recommended approval with changes. So, they had included that to approve the modified street cross-section as proposed, to have a waiver of the RV parking and storage. As a side note, they proposed the waiver of RV parking and storage for not only the single-family, but the townhome. But we're only focused on the single-family tonight. To approve the modified no-build area based on the cross-section provided and that the phasing plan and improvements be completed in a way that does not allow more than 10 units on a single point of ingress and egress and that the housing product was acceptable and appropriate for this development. So, the city council, following suit, will need to consider this proposal and remand it back to staff for additional review or for information or to approve with conditions. And then, as always, every motion should include findings.
I have a whole host of questions. I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead. Sorry.
No, it was fine. So, you'd ask for a waiver on the pressurized irrigation connection. Is that a waiver in, to come back in and tear the roads up to put it in later? Or is that something that's just not initially connected? We put in the PI system, we put in the meters and wait for the PI to get to it, run it on culinary water until that point in time? Is that, am I under that understanding that it's not going to have to go back in and tear everything up to put it in? It will be there, it just won't be connected, right?
So, they will be putting the dry lines in their development.
Okay.
It is a matter of timing of when it occurs in Arrowhead Trail. As a side note, we're finalizing the DAE annexation, which is 212 acres here. And they have a lot of the frontage along Arrowhead Trail, so they are also going to benefit from this or will be participating in the extension of these utilities. So, recognizing that you have to have culinary water and you have to have sewer and you have to have power, the applicants couldn't install all that here, but is looking at just doing a single-source water system for the outside use until DAE comes in and may extend the pressurized irrigation line to the extent of their frontage. And then, the applicant will extend the PI line the full distance of their frontage. So, it's just a matter of timing. Discussions we've had with Dever Anderson Enterprises is that they're moving forward fairly quickly on finalizing the annexation, putting development plans together. So, we're hoping that this will maybe be a season or two at the most. But that, but that's why we're looking at the postponement is just to allow this property owner to participate with extending their entire frontage.
Okay. And earlier I was asking where that property line was, was 2200 West, the actual property, the city boundaries. I was discussing it earlier with one of the staff members about signs that say, welcome to Payson, Payson City. That's based on your discretion. We have to have private entities that'll allow us to put those signs there or we'll put them up themselves. We'd love to make you part of our city and you're not going to look like it clear out there. Is there a possibility that we could incorporate that into this plat, throwing the sign on there? I'm getting an affirmative back there. So, we're good.
Is that the last question?
That was all I had. I'm sorry.
No.
I'm very, very excited and I like to see that. I just want to feel like they're part of Payson and they're not out there so far that they're just, they're their own bubble.
No, that's the only question and we'll, I mean, we can have the applicant come up and he can answer those questions directly.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else have...
Yeah, I wonder what the anticipated home value would be for these homes out here.
We're going to have the applicant...
We can have him talk it up.
Great question. Any others for me?
Yeah, I do. Why can't we do the final plat approval with the preliminary? What's the holdup?
The applicant hasn't submitted the final plat.
Right. That is not on us, right? As long as it's not on us, then I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm going to receive the final plat, the review fees. We haven't received the design for the sewer lift station, so there are a few things that the applicant is continuing to work on and we're hoping we'll have that back to you soon.
Oh, so at the sewer station, we're not going to enter an agreement with Salem to send it there? We're sending it back to us?
We're still exploring that.
We're still, okay.
They're so far out.
So, it's all still on the table.
Right. I was just wondering when they talk about the lift station.
And whether or not Travis has an update on that, I'm not sure, but maybe he can speak to it.
Well, the sewer plant won't be built in time for them to use it. So, they have to build a lift station or they can't, they got to wait like two years to start this.
Yeah, let's not wait.
No, we don't want to wait.
I have a question for Travis. On the use of culinary water for the irrigation of the lots, how much can we really put on the culinary down there with what we're putting in and still have water pressure for, you know, I know it's, we're covering for culinary, but for, using for secondary? How many lots could we cover in that long?
We kind of ran some just preliminary calculations. We could probably put between 350 to 400 units on there before they would have to get onto the PI system. Part of what we'll talk about in a little bit is why we're, we need to go spend a lot of money to get the PI so we can actually service this too as well as them. So, that's kind of the holdup too, is we would have a hard time servicing this right now on our PI.
We wouldn't have any pressure up on the hill, would we?
Not very much.
So, are we ready to have some answers from the developer? Come on up.
So, Dave Gardner is presenting for the Terry Herwood team.
I'm Dave Gardner. I'm one of the partners in the development. So, I guess the issues that we're asking for some exceptions, rules, are first, the road widths. Really, all through the development, five-foot sidewalks are what your standards are. And really what we're doing is taking the parking off the road so we can narrow that to, whatever that distance is, for two parking spaces on the bridge. We don't need to allow people to park on the bridge when they're crossing over there.
Well, my concern is if you have two groups of people walking towards each other and there's only one sidewalk, they're going to have to cross and there isn't that buffer of that parking to step off of. And so, it was only over that initial land bridge where that road narrows was, that was the only spot I was concerned about.
So, in future phases, there's the trail that runs along here next to the wetlands. There's this trail that runs, my word, my, got to stop drinking coffee this late at night. This trail here runs along Beer Creek. And that's the place where we have some, you know, 100-foot wide open space with the trail meandering through there. So, we just feel like if we could get these two, the section here narrowed and this section here narrowed, we'd be accomplishing everything we can hope to accomplish with the Army Corps. Now, I'm not saying that they wouldn't approve it if you wanted sidewalk on both sides. I don't know.
But if it's something that has to go back to the Army Corps of Engineers, that's not worth the wait.
Yeah, we don't want to ask.
No.
No. No, I just didn't know if that's where you had narrowed it. If they've approved that, then let's go with that approval.
Okay, thank you. The next one was the RV parking. Like to not put that in right now. We, there is a proposal on the Salem side and the massive development that Salem's looking at for some light industrial uses, including storage units and RV parking in the store. We'd rather have our people use that than put it in our own development because they tend to be a real hassle for HOAs. And I know that the staff has told us that there's been issues in the past in Payson with RV parking being a problem. We would like to see if our CCNRs couldn't encourage these people that have RVs to park in a designated area. If, this is going to be a long project. If we can't, we start having problems, we'll figure out a way to put it in our own development, but our goal is not having. The other one is the 50-foot no-build. That sounds, that sounds terrible to ask for a waiver on that, but here's why. These lots that front...
Oh, you want to say lots first?
Yeah. Okay, these lots here that back onto Beer Creek and as that other graphic that Jill showed where the ground drops off fairly quickly, we don't want to create a second trail, unofficial trail, behind those people's homes. So, what we'd like to do is put a wrought iron fence right on the, on the back of the lot and then people can see through it. They can see the landscaping on the other side. Their kids are fenced in. But we don't end up creating a de facto trail because we move 50 feet off in the backyards of these single-family lots. It's important for us to keep those lots premium, which will mean that our sales prices of the homes are going to be in the 350-plus range. And the reason that we're not asking for the townhome approval tonight is we have been in negotiations with the builder who is building a product that's going to fit really well next to these homes that are a decent price. The townhomes will be more than we thought people could get on those. He's done this and I don't know if any of you had a chance to go and look at the product. The staff took some people out there yesterday or today. I can't remember now. So, anyway, that's the reason for the request for the 50 feet. We'll have more than 50 feet on the other side of Beer Creek. We'll have, it'll average between 100 and, from 60 feet to 120 feet, just meander through there. And again, I commit to, I commit to Jill, we are not going to ask for any building permit after 10. You know, we'll be, we'll be putting in all of these streets at the same time. We may not do this one, this little cul-de-sac right off, but these others we're going to be doing right up front. The reason we've done them in two phases is for financing purposes. We're actually going to be using two banks and banks, they want their own plat around, so. So, that's the, that's basically the reason why. It's purely the financial issue there. So, we will be recording both of these plats at the same time and bonding for all of those improvements at the same time, even though it's with two different banks. Okay, so... What else? What did I mean about...
He answered that?
Yeah. I think that'll be where we'll...
So, I just had a...
Product that's under 300,000, but you can't build right now. Building costs, let alone land costs, the building costs are just outrageous, so.
What size are the lots going to be and what's your price point on the lots?
The lots are, they range from the high 700, 7,000 square feet to 10, 11, 12,000. We have a couple that are pretty good size. Most of them are about 8,500 on an average. And I don't know the price range. I guess, probably...
Just under 90,000.
So, we'll be, we as, the townhome development will be done by a different builder. He's not the master developer yet, but he will be doing all the townhomes. We don't do townhomes so well. We'll be putting in the improvements and selling the lots individually to smaller builders. We won't be bulk selling to one big track home builder. So, you'll have a wide variety of housing types, products. Our CCNRs are going to be critical and don't have those done either yet. So, another reason for Jill to recommend not giving us final approval on subdivision. We're okay with that. Just like to get preliminary and then dive into the legal stuff, which gets expensive. Any other questions?
I'm wondering if you could put in that CCNRs. I know we can't make people push their garages back, but with all of the research that's been done on it, they find that the garages that are back makes it a more livable community where people want to get out and meet their neighbors, where when you're going and that's what you walk, here's the driveway and the garage and then the house is set back and you keep seeing that. You're not seeing the front of the house. You're just seeing the garage. I mean, I...
These lots are wide enough that we should... These lots are wide enough that we should be able to do that.
To push them back?
Yeah, I think you see that garage out in front when the lot itself narrows out. It's, the house becomes deeper because the garage is out front and the house is behind the garage. Where these lots are more conventional, uh, the conventional.
Well, I just think this would help yourselves too because people, people want to feel safe. And that was one of the studies they found, that people didn't feel safe walking down the sidewalk when those garages are out like that because they can't see around it.
Yeah.
So I'm just, that's just a study that's been done, I just thought we'd like to know.
No, I, I, I think that makes sense.
Anything else? Let's not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could just add something.
You bet.
Kim had just reminded me, as far as the RV parking, um, the recommendation of the planning commission was to implement the increased side setback on the garage side that other applicants have implemented in order to meet the RV requirement. We've done that on Spring Side Meadows and we've done it on Ashley Ridge. Um, and so that's also something that could be considered to address RV parking for single-family homes.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion from the council.
I'll make a motion that we improve the preliminary plat approval for phases one through three of the villages at Arrowhead Park, approximately fifteen hundred north and consistent with fifty single-family dwellings width. Uh, modifications to the street cross-section for wetline crossings, uh, waiver of the RV park and the storage area, modification of the fifty-foot foot setback on Bear Creek with a wrought iron fence along the backside, uh, compliant with all city regulations, uh, postponement of the pressurized irrigation, uh, phasing limited to ten units on a single point of ingress and egress. And with a, uh, utility extension agreement for services, um, as others come into the, that tie into the services they put in. And the housing product, uh, that's, uh, makes this type of subdivision approved by the city. And then the last one was increase the, the city, the planning commission had was to increase the side parking. Okay, increase the side parking for RVs and then not include any findings on staff conditions. Did that, did that cover it?
Yes, but after a second, I just need a clarification. After a second, may I? I'll second that. Okay. Just a clarification is to increase not the parking, but increase the side setback on the garage side.
Okay. Side setback.
I don't want the applicant to feel like he's gotta put more concrete in.
Good. Do we need to add the welcome to Payson sign in there somewhere or wouldn't it?
Add that. We'll even pay for it.
And I'll put in, put in having a welcome to Payson sign. Thank you.
Okay, there's been a motion, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, please.
Did we amend the motion?
Oh, okay.
If the motion was being amended, we're good. I made amendments.
Okay, it's been amended?
I will second the amendment.
Okay.
Roberts, rules, are we okay?
I think so.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go on to number six, final plat for Spring Side Meadows subdivision, plat E located at approximately eighteen hundred south and main. Again, Jill, I guess you're up.
Okay. You know, we're gonna breeze through this one. You've seen a lot of spring site meadows lately and I know the applicant's just ready to start digging in the dirt. So we're gonna move through this one really quickly.
He's speeding them bad though, Jill.
I've been sitting here this long, don't I get my amount of [inaudible 0:58:58].
Hey, Mike, you know I can go on for a long time. Do you really want that?
Just tell him you're putting up a Payson sign and you're okay.
Is that an option on your property?
And sidewalks.
You can take down the cell sign, you know.
We use it for backside?
No, actually, actually Salisbury's doing a lot for us on this project. We are getting some open space, we're getting an area for a fire station and for a substation. And so in his own right, he's been doing some great things for the community. So, so the area that we're looking at is on the south side of town, here Spring Lake Elementary here. The first phases, A through D, um, have been, you know, approved. A lot of the homes built and, and plat D, which is L-shaped in this location, uh, they're putting the infrastructure in at this time. So the area that they're looking at is just going south of eighteen hundred south. This is the phasing plan showing all of the property that the applicant owns all the way from the Spring Lake Elementary School down to SR one IBA going out to Sound and Coin here. So as you can see, there's multiple phases here. Um, there'll be several different neighborhoods and product in this particular neighborhood. So E is twenty-three lots in this location there. Just another view of it, how it relates to the rest of the development. Here's the final plat, um, that, and we are requesting final plat approval. Here's the housing product that has been identified for this particular neighborhood, um, along with the overall development. We do need to have some housing throughout the entire development in the different neighborhoods. And this is the product chosen for this one, be very similar to plat A through D. So items of consideration, um, the direction of the city council when you granted preliminary layout approval was to address these items at the time of final plat approval. RV parking, as we had just considered with the previous proposal and with other projects, is to allow the RV parking with the increased setback on each lot. Housing product, uh, hard surface materials, including the engineered wood siding would be allowed in this, um, in this phase. The existing irrigation facilities, there are several irrigation facilities that cross, um, these parcels. Uh, the applicant has addressed this, they have met with, um, downstream users in the area and they will work with the Bureau of Recreation and the High Line Canal Company to make sure that those, um, irrigation facilities will be kept or relocated so there isn't any disruption in service. Except, extension of utility services and utilities that will happen by phase, we just need to make sure that they are, they are extended to the full extent of the phase. Making sure that there's not only service for their future phases for, for adjoining property owners. Two points of ingress and greet, uh, and ingress, ingress and egress, as mentioned with the previous one. We just need to make sure that each phase, as it's done, we do have those two access points. Project fencing along Main Street, there is only a small section along Main Street. All the other homes will actually face Main Street in two thousand south. So there is a small section with, um, plats E and F, I believe. And the applicant is requesting, um, to install vinyl fencing in that. The recommendation of the planning commission was to do the vinyl with the decorative concrete columns, similar to what you see further north along Main Street. Open space and public trail system will be completed, will be completed in future phases. They do not traverse this particular phase. And then the satisfaction of staff conditions, um, that will just continue working with the applicant and the project engineer to satisfy those conditions. So that is the extent of my presentation. Uh, the applicant is requesting final plat approval so they can report on plat E. As a side note, I think I put this in the staff report, but the applicant, uh, they are already working on the off-site improvements, um, in order to service these phases. Uh, they did need to install an off-site sewer trunk line, um, and they have already started on the construction of that and would like to report on the, on the final phases of this project. So with that being said, Mike DiMarco is here with Salisbury if he wants to add anything to that. Um, or he's here for any questions he may have in his hopes to get final plat approval.
Council, have any questions? Probably shouldn't. Okay, I think it's time for me to ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we improve the final plat, uh, for the Spring Side Meadow subdivision plat E, approximately eighteen hundred south and Main Street with the satisfaction of staff conditions.
Second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And thanks for getting my road back open.
Yes, sir.
We'll go number seven, resolution, carbon free power project sales contract with Utah Associated Municipal Power Systems UAMPS. Ron, you're up. Finally, huh?
Yeah. We've been looking at the Carbon Free Project now for quite a while and seen it's developing, moving along very well. The reason why we're looking at this is in twenty twenty-two, the San Juan coal fire plant will be shut down. And right now we're taking about seven megawatts out of that facility to, to serve our base need. And so we've been very interested as staff on finding a replacement for that, that base need that would be, uh, the most environmentally friendly, uh, resource we could. So, uh, we're progressing very well with the project. Doug Hunter is the general manager from UAMPS is here to give you an update and to answer any questions and to hopefully move forward with the resolution to sign a power sales contract as we, we move forward with this project, so.
Ron, when was that going to close the power plant?
It's in twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Good evening, I'm Doug Hunter, the general manager of Utah Associated Municipal Power Systems. Uh, I believe we've had one workshop with you here before, there's been other things in this one. So we've been working on this for about seven years to bring to this point. So just as an oversight, uh, an overview of this, uh, the Carbon Free Power Project really consists of three, uh, concepts that we want to deal with. But only one are we gonna capitalize and, and look at putting money into. But, uh, that doesn't mean the other two are not very important. So the foundation is energy efficiency. The whole concept, uh, that we want to bring about here on energy efficiency is that we just don't build a kilowatt that's going to be replaced by, let's say, a new TV that's more efficient or a refrigerator, new lighting and things like that. So UAMPS has developed an energy efficiency program, it's voluntary for the cities and that, but we do support it. Uh, amongst the things that we're really encouraging everybody to continue to do that, that's the cheapest form of maintaining your power rates is to not just get rid of the waste, if you will, to be efficient. And then obviously, uh, what's going on is not, not as, uh, impacting here in Utah, but it is distributed generation. You most likely know that as solar cells sitting on the top of the roof of a house and that, and I believe you're net metering here. And that, uh, there's a lot of controversy around net metering, of course, in the state. There's a big hearing up in the Public Service Commission between Rock Mountain Power and that. Uh, UAMPS has encouraged the cities, again, it's voluntary, to address it to the best, uh, level of their communities. However, they feel fit to deal with distributed generation. But we do encourage it because distributed generation, again, is a form of savings because when you put the power, uh, uh, resource, uh, generation at the load, you save the transmission losses. So like from the Hunter Power Plant or the San Juan Power Plant in Mexico, on average, it's about fifteen percent losses to get it to the house. When you put a solar cell right on the house, you avoid that fifteen percent losses and stuff goes through. And it also, uh, it speaks to your community. A lot of people want to do this and go on and we do think it's a good thing to go down the road, but it is. Just voluntary, we got a program to support that and how each community wants to deal with that, uh, we're encouraging it. The, the third lake is the one we're gonna capitalize, this is the small modular reactors. This project, uh, is slated for the Idaho National Laboratory up in Idaho. If you know southeast Idaho there, there's Idaho Falls, there's Blackfoot and there's Arco. That's the triangle where the Idaho National Laboratory sits. It's eight hundred and twenty square miles of land that was set apart by the Department of Energy for the development of commercial reactor use. The first electrons that came out of a generator powered by nuclear power, uh, powered Arco, Idaho, that was the first thing. They've had fifty-three reactors on that site already, currently there are three that are operating. And we would be the first commercial entity to come on to the site. We have negotiated that lease with the Department of Energy, so that's all in place. And now we're now in the process of moving forward into, uh, in the next phase. This phase is actually just one year. So in the power sales contracts that you're considering right now, there will be an off-ramp approx. Right now, we're estimating that'll be April one of next year. It could be May or June. It depends on when we spend six million dollars. That, that's the budget. So I'm gonna use that as an example of how we're getting funding here. So out of that six million dollars, the Department of Energy is gonna provide three million of it, half of it, they're gonna bring in. And new scale, the company that's building the reactors is gonna provide another one and a half million dollars to us. So UAMPS' obligation is only one and a half million dollars into this next phase. And on top of that, if we decide, there's still a couple of questions that we're moving forward on. If we decide as UAMPS to withdraw from that, new scale will give us back the one and a half million dollars that we spent. So we get a hundred percent reimbursement for what any ever reason we want to.
Up until next year?
Well, until we spend the six million. That, that's, the six million is really the cap. Uh, you know, so we put a budget together thinking we can do that, you know how things go. Uh, we may not get a full spend in a year, you know, where we're sitting there, may go a little longer, but it'd be up until that time. Uh, the other thing that's important that we, we're bringing this out to the cities now here in the, the area. And we've been, uh, thirty-four cities in the Intermountain area are looking to participate in this. And, uh, currently, three, three have decided not to participate. And those are the city of Price, the city of Morgan, and the Truckee Donner Public Utility District in California. And those are the three. And those, those reasons that they've decided, Price, I mean, I don't want, Price is, is concerned about economics and because the power plants are closing and their, their load's gonna drop and they just don't need any resource. That's the thing, it's not just this, it's just any resource. Uh, they just really feel like they can't afford it, can't move forward. They're really concerned about recession over there in Carman County. And it's a major concern of the town, the mayor and the city council over there. So they, they do claim to do that. Uh, Morgan City is, uh, really not growing to the extent they thought they were gonna grow. And again, they've got power need or power, uh, supply that will last them through and so they just, they're just very, very small. And Truckee, just because their position in California is to say politically, they just don't want to deal with the issue. Though we do have another California participant, uh, last municipal utility district that will be participating up there, Susanville in the north. So they've decided to buck the political trend. But if you're familiar with the concept of the state of Jefferson in northern California and the twenty counties, they're in one of those counties. So you can see how they're looking to want to buck the Bay Area a little bit. Going through, but those are the only three. Uh, we have now have eighteen that have signed moving forward. We've got, we're anticipating that almost everybody else is gonna sign. And, uh, really this is just the, the main reason we want to move this at this, this stage for just this one year is the Department of Energy has been a really good partner for us here. And under this administration, even under the past administration, we had a lot of support out of the Department of Energy. But it's really been focused under this administration. They want to see this, they want to see the nuclear industry come back in the United States and have the United States be a leader. And they believe these small modular reactors are the answer to that. The second thing that they do, and this is directly coming out of the White House actually, is that our deployment's gonna be up on a, a DLE site. We just decided that would be a good, safe place to show that this, what we're saying and, and putting into the, uh, the factual basis here, that these are safe, simple and affordable. And we just figured we can prove that up there and we don't have to have a lot of people worry about it. The NRC's gonna license that under those provisions, I can go through those items with you if wish. But subsequent deployments could be at the Hunter site in Emery County, a shutdown coal plant that has water, transmission, the workforce. Our, these, this plant, uh, there are fifty megawatt generators, we're gonna look at twelve of them on one site on thirty-five acres of land. Very, very small footprint for that amount of power. And we'll have about three hundred and fifty employees. Fifteen percent of those employees will be basically required to have a four-year education. So eighty-five percent will be, we're only gonna require a high school education and then train them. So what that means in these rural areas in the, is we can take the displaced coal miners, power plant operators, truck drivers and train them into these jobs. And then we also bring back the ad valorem value to the counties for the, their tax base as it comes through. So the White House has really adopted that, you know, jobs in America is a big deal for this administration. And so, uh, they've really gotten on board on that. And Secretary Perry over at the Department of Energy has been very supportive. But they would like to see us move a little bit more forward than just taking their money and studying the project. They would like to see us sign up and see that, you know, that we've got participants that want to move forward and move on with the project. So that's why we decided to go through it until, just do it on a limited basis. So in a year, uh, we will have an off-ramp for all the participants. And that's built into the contracts, Mark can go through, it's built into the contract. And it's based on the fact that we set the budget at six million. And the way the contracts work is that we amend the budget upwards. We have to give every participant at any time we amend the budget, greater than what it's put into, what you have in the packet is this budget and plan of finance that has all the budgetary costs of the entire project from, uh, cradle to grave. So it goes from the very, this very, the day right now, clear to the very date of decommissioning of the units we go through. And that, these are budgetary limits, I can show you what that looks like. This is for Payson. So, uh, these are, so, and I'll go through what this really means here. So for the entire project set at, and this, uh, this is actually, uh, commercialized cost, uh, at four point two billion dollars. The initial is basically three billion, that's just. at $4.2 billion, the initial is basically $3 billion, that's just overnight cost, though. We're going to be borrowing 100% debt to deal with this project, and we will capitalize the interest. But we have capped the upper price as well as each of these budgetary items. So we've got to guarantee that the price will be no greater than 6.5 cents a kilowatt hour onto the grid. If it's greater than that, we'll get reimbursement from New Scale. We can exit the project, get our money back, if you will, so that we don't have to worry about cost overruns and runaway costs on this. We do have a projected low price of 4.5 cents a kilowatt hour. That would be less than what you're paying right now in San Juan, that's already. And today, I give you my best feel is we're about 5.7 cents, and that's almost right on the San Juan. So that's where we're sitting today. And I can, if you wanted to, I can get into how we think we can get down to that lower number. But we do have a contractual cap, so that we don't have a run rate. And then if we amend any of these phases, you see that middle period, it says phase one, there's two periods of phase one, and the second phase of licensing. If we were to amend any of those caps, and the $6 million, you can see that there in the first phase of licensing, that's, that's not going to take us very far, it'll take us for about a year. So we do have to amend that budget if we're going to move forward. And contractually, that gives you, as well as every other participant, the right to exit the project, as you go out of that, come out of the project. UAMS has to have 100% entitlement for the project. UAMS is, where does a political subdivision in the state of Utah here, under Title 11, that we look at, so we don't have the authority to hold any, if you will, inventory in our name, it has to be sold to somebody else. And so if Payson City, for instance, were to withdraw, we would have to fill that slot, or we can't move forward. And if we can't fill the slot, the project collapses, we get all our money back, and everybody goes. If we do fill the slot, I would assume you would want your money back, if it was just you leaving, and you would be in a position, negotiating, a bargaining position, to make sure you get that money back if you go. As we go through. I can go through the technology really quickly, if you like, again, too, I just don't, I don't want to bore you with the things we've gone over this evening. I'll just quickly say, these reactors, the interesting thing, this is what's new, and there's no new technology here. This is what's called a light water pressurized reactor. This is exactly what the Navy uses, and this, this reactor has no moving parts except for the control rods that control the fission in the uranium. That's the only moving parts, there's no pumps, there's nothing else that goes on, it all works off of natural convection, conduction, and gravity going through. And this is improvement technology the Navy's used, the USS George Washington Aircraft Carrier has passive flow nuclear plant, and a number of submarines have this already. So we're not bringing any new technology to the Nuclear Regulatory Commission for licensing, we're just packaging it differently, that's the way to do it. And this package is very unique, and that's what's that different here. They have, it's going to be, these are 76 feet tall, they're 15 feet in diameter, and they really are like a thermos bottle. Because when we're operating them, there's going to be two middle containers, one inside will hold the uranium and that, and then there'll be a vacuum formed when we're operating to the outside containment. These modules were built in a factory and hauled out to the site. That's another simplicity, simplification we put in this to avoid overruns. So we're not building the reactors out in the field, like every reactor in the United States has been built out in the field. And that's what's caused a lot of the problems, we believe, in terms of the industry and its past problems here. On top of that, though, we have these guarantees from FLOR that, that if we have run away, that we'll get our money back. And it, so the concept right now, let me go back, so right now, this first phase, see it up there, is that we're looking at basically 23, for this next year, UAMS, right now, we're not looking at financing for this next year, though we're going to, we've got a mechanism in place, we'll be talking about it at the board meeting in a couple of weeks up in Salt Lake, that we won't be building a participant, but I just wanted to point this out, if we decide, this would be the last year that we would be building a participant, we've been building the participants through this study phase here, as we've been developing it. As I said, with half of the money coming from the Department of Energy, and another 25% coming from New Scale. So we've only been paying 25% of the cost here. That'd be the same concept here, and that's representing that line of 20, my, my, my eyesight's not as good, it should be $23,718, I think that's what it says, thank you. And that would be the maximum outlay. And that's 100% reimbursable if, if we decide to go through it. So, but right now, we're not planning on building that, I, it's not my call, I have to go to people like Ron on my project management committee, and the governing board to get that approval, but we'll be making, staff will be making a recommendation, that we'll just use our lines of credit right now and not do that, because if we decide not to move forward to the project in April of 19, we're going to get it reimbursed anyway. So we saw no reason to try and collect it from the cities, and then move back, we'll just keep it in our lines of credit. And if we move forward, we'll just move it into the financing. After that, there'll be no more billings to the city until we go commercial. And then the city would be buying power, and at the price that, as I said, the upper cap is 6.5 cents, and that is a total inclusive cost, there's nothing that is not included in that. It includes decommissioning, operations, land, all the way, there's not a single thing. It brings it onto the grid, so it's also the interconnection facilities and all that that bring it up onto the grid. We're going to be connecting, of what's called the antelope substation up in Idaho, that connects with Idaho Power Company, Rocky Mountain Power Company, and Bonneville Power Administration. So we have a great little tie there coming in, and I think that's maybe the, I think an overview, if there's any other questions or concerns you would like to talk about, I can sure do that. And I do have more slides, if you want me to go through, I'm just trying to be economic with the time.
A few questions for you.
Yeah.
First of all, who's, who, what entity is New Scale?
Okay, New Scale is a private company that was developed out there, headquarters in Corvallis, Oregon. It was a joint effort out of Oregon State University and one of the professors that came up with this technology. And they licensed it up, and then, then the Oregon State University, through their economic development, sold it to FLOR Corporation. So that's a big construction company, one of the top construction companies in the world, they're headquartered in Dallas. And they basically, they, they put a billion dollars into this product already, and so they're technically the owner. So they are for profit, but in this instance, here, we're not for profit, everything we're doing is based on cost there, and we have negotiated down to take the profit motive out of this first deployment. They will make their money on subsequent deployments, not on us, to go through, so that is.
Okay, so when the first nuclear power plant's built, if I understood you correctly, we aren't going to pay anything, we just have to pay the cost of the power?
Yes, that right, that's right.
And just for my curiosity, how much is that, look at the chart, how much is that first one going to cost?
Well, the, you know, I don't really know the answer to the first, each module's about $70 million.
$70, okay.
Yeah, $70 million per module, as it goes through, yeah. But we haven't really looked that way. Let me, if I could, just give you a little bit more background on that. The first two modules, right now, are anticipated to be leased by the Department of Energy at I N L. And this is because these, we have not manufactured these before, so that means we have first of kind manufacturing risk, we have first of kind deployment risk, and we have first of kind operational risk. And I didn't want us to take that, bird not. I don't think that's fair to ask us to take that. So we asked the Department of Energy to come in there and take on that first of kind manufacturing, deployment, and operational risk. So the first two modules will be paid for by the Department of Energy, under a lease concept, if you will. We'll get them back in five to 10 years, depending on the terms of the lease, and they're going to be, right now, the terms will be that they come back just as if they were new, they come through that, or replaced if they don't. So if there's some type of hangup when we do the first manufacturing deployment, that's where those costs will go. We will start taking power right now out of module number three. So in a way, I tried to remove the whole kind, first of kind concept, and go to a third of kind, if you will, to deal with that.
You say, you say that the money will be refunded, maybe, you know, maybe I don't want to talk about, but how, how was that going to happen? I mean, that's an awful lot of money that would have to be refunded, maybe all at once to everybody, so everybody get their money back.
Yeah, if you, if we cancel the project down, if the whole project collapses down, everybody, that, right now, that's going to be over about a 90-day period, that's in our contracts with New Scale set up, and we're requiring bonding, we're, you know, I can get into some of the nuances of bankruptcy law, but we've, we've gone through that with New Scale, we're requiring a bond to be set up, that's going to be set up independently for this, so that we don't have to worry about that, that type of a situation. And right now, it's anticipated would be within 90 days of our notice to terminate if it comes through. And then each participant would get reimbursed, well, what we do is we really take that money just to pay off the notes, the bonds. So that, there probably would be, because we're not billing you, there wouldn't be really any money coming back to you, but it'll leave UAMS the obligation of repaying the debt, that's what that would go into.
Doug?
Yes, sir.
Life of the project, you've indicated that that price includes decommissioning and, so what is the life?
Okay, that's a good question, Mike, is it, they, so if I could, just so you understand the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, and I'm not going to say I fully understand Nuclear Regulatory, it's a very complex group out there, but they're an independent body in the United States, they, and their whole purpose is for safety, to protect the public from any type of harm. So they don't really care what things cost or anything, they require it to be safe. And so we're in the licensing phase right now for the design certification, that is, New Scale's paying for that, they're in front, they've already, it's costing about $500 million in front of the NRC, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, already, but they're a year ahead of time in schedule. This thing is so safe, so simple, the NRC's saying, well, there's not much for us to look at, we've looked at it all, and they've gone through phase one with flying colors, going through everything. UAMS is going to have to apply for a combined construction and operating license, the acronym's a COLA, combined construction, operating license application, doesn't quite agree with that, and we're going to be doing that in 2020. And we're anticipating that, that will, that, the NRC regulations say they can take up to 40 months to look at that, even if, in the past, they've gone over that. They will commit to us, we're, we're using the same thing we've already met with the NRC, they will commit to us not to exceed 39 months. And they've also indicated we might only be 24 months because of the simplicity as they're going through it. What that means, when we get that license, that license to construct and operate will allow an operating period of 40 years. So that's the first phase. Then we have an option to renew that license for another 20 years, and then at the end of that 20 years, there's another renewal period for 20 years. So it's basically an 80-year project. The numbers I gave you, the 6.5 cents a kilowatt hour, down to the 4.5 cents a kilowatt hour, that's the 45, that's the 40-year levelized cost of the project. And so we're not looking at, we're going to base our pricing off of that, what we call that levelized cost of energy, and LCOE is the acronym, you'll see, you'll see in the documents, we're basing, that's going to be the charge coming out for the entire project out there. So we, it's, there's not a lot of things that go on here, you repower these every two years, you fuel them, they're good for two years, they're actually good for four, but we have to, NRC right now requires every two years, all the wells to be inspected, the whole thing to be inspected. So we have, these are modules are small, 76 feet high, 15 feet diameter, it's hot in there, it's vacuum, you're not going to stick a human in there when they're operating. So we have to take them offline, and let me just show you, just so you see how simplistic that is. There we go. So this is the side cut of the building, that's, the brown on the outside is on the left and the right, that's ground, and then this is sitting in basically about 8 million gallons of water underground. Each one of those silos is a module. There's a depiction of a module sitting right there on the left coming in, and then the refueling area is right there, you see refueling machine right there. So we can take one out of service and leave 11 operating. That is a big improvement. Right now, when you repower a nuclear station, you have to shut it down for over a month. And so there's no power, it's very expensive, we'll still have operation, and we'll be doing this every two months, refueling one, once we're in the full cycle. We have enough fuel to go for four years, and so we've asked the NRC, they're going to be considering this in our application, our license, to let us go on inspections for four years, but we still have to work that out. But those would be, that's about the only movements that come through, there's, I said there's no, if I have, let me see, that's the side, I don't think I have just one, oh, there's the module right there, sitting there. There's really, as I said, there's no moving parts, so the engineering life of one of these modules is 60 years, that's what we're putting into our performance guarantees here. So we should have, and there's very little capital improvements. Now, add on the steam, they'll each have individual steam generators, obviously there'd be some maintenance on those, cooling towers, if we use wet cooling, there'll be maintenance on those. But the capital improvement budget here is very small on this to go through, so we really do see that this would be a levelized cost for at least 40 years. We're going to have for the, the project management committee and the board of directors at UAMS here, we're going to show you a 60-year levelized cost of energy, that's going to be lower, I think, but, you know, it's, because if the module's only good for 60 years, we'd probably go 40-year license, one 20-year application, instead of having to do capital improvements on the existing module, we'd probably just buy another module and go for another 40, 60, but that's still to be seen. But it does then go through, so we are collecting all the money for the decommission, that's an, that's a Nuclear Regulatory Commission requirement, that we have the money in place, and that is in the, all the pricing, from the 6.5 down to the 4.5. And that, one of the unique things about this is decommissioning is very simple on these. We bring them in with a truck, we bring these modules in, they're building a factory, we bring them in a truck, when we're done with them, put them on a truck and take them away. Now, the fuel on the back end is spent, go ahead, sir.
Oh, where is the, the fuel being, the, the waste being stored, is it still coming to Utah?
No, it's, no, there's nothing, none of this is going through Utah at all, actually, it's all going up in, right now.
So Energy Solutions isn't taking it on?
No, no, they, in fact, they don't have the ability to.
Take this type?
Yeah. On this site, right there, you see that ISFSI dry cast storage piece down there in the lower left hand, right there, that is our spent fuel, that is four acres of land, we, in the dry cast storage, these are six feet high, we can handle 80 years of fuel on four acres, six feet high. That's all of our pollution, that's all of our spent fuel. And by the way, that fuel, it still has 95% of the energy in it, and this is just due to light water reactors, and it can be reprocessed. In the United States, we don't reprocess it. One, that was the Carter administration, so they were worried about proliferation of weapons, and so they stopped reprocessing, the rest of the world wasn't worried about that, they still go it. But the reality, the economics, it's cheaper to be, make new fuel than it is to reprocess right now. That's just the economics. And that, so we can hold this all, one of the unique things about our site up there, it is a DOE site, as I said, it's had 53 reactors, all that fuel's still up there. The DOE actually takes responsibility, when we put it in that dry cask, let me just flip that one here, you see there, over on the left, we have spent fuel pool? The NRC requires this, when we take the fuel out of the reactor after refueling, to store that in that water bay for five years. But the heat level of our react, of our fuel core is so low, we could, it's cool enough to put it in dry cast storage in 60 days, we could do it, but the NRC reps right now have to save five years, that's another one we're going to ask them. But we do have room to handle five years' worth of fuel in that spent fuel. That is ours, and that's our responsibility, why it's sitting in that, that wet storage. And then when we move to the dry cask and put it out there, it becomes a responsibility to the Department of Energy. And since we're on a Department of Energy site, they've told us, if Yucca Mountain gets, you know, gets funded and moves on, we're probably the last shipment would ever go there. They said, what, you know, we would move it from the commercial reactors back east first, and things of that nature, we're, you're already on a DOE site, so it could just sit there. These casks are, by regulation, they cannot emit any radiation, they cannot emit any heat, they've got, they're encased in basically lead and concrete, the fuel rods are, and the casks are good for hundreds of years, right there. The other thing to remember is this nuclear fuel, you know the little licorice nibs, remember the little box, okay, that's a fuel pellet, it looks just like one of those licorice, those nibs, that's how they, that little, that little fuel pellet right there represents a ton of coal energy in that, that we're taking, and it's encapsulated in a ceramic surrounding, so if they were to crack or break or something down the road, you're just going to have a pile of very dense little pellets sitting on the ground. They're not going to, the wind can't blow them, I mean, they're very heavy, these little pellets, I mean, I've had one of my, it's surprising, when you, you get that in your hand, how heavy it is, you're not expecting that little thing to actually make your hand drop, you know, you think you could hold that, you know, in your hand, very, very dense. So we're just going to, right now, we're, the DOE pays us to store it there, and that's where we're going to store it. So we can do 80 years' worth of our fuel right there on that site, watching it, moving it, it's, I could go through, you know, fuel cycles, pretty simple stuff, it's pretty, I've been up to them, touched them, been around them, we've taken radio, you know, radiological detection around. We've taken radio, you know, radiological detection around, you just don't read anything out of the background. It's pretty safe out there. And it's very small. So what we're asking is to see if you would have the willingness to enter into the resolution. Like I said, it'd be for a one-year optional price to keep the project moving, and then we'll come back to report to you.
So one other question I had is, is this whole thing could be potentially held up by one person? I mean, I understand we all are money back, but if one person backs out, the whole deal's done?
Good. Yeah, that's, we've never done this before, Doug, it's, you know, UAMs, that's a risk, right? And we, but we spent over a year with all the participants negotiating the power sales contracts. And this is, that's what they wanted. And so I, hopefully, you understand that risk paradigm, right, that goes on? But with the reimbursement, but that doesn't mean we couldn't restart it again.
Sure.
Right? But it, so it was something that participants wanted. To be honest with you, as staff, I didn't, you know, it's, it's hair-raising for me, to be honest with you. But that's what the participants, yeah, it's, yeah, yeah. It gives a lot of leverage even to the smallest.
Sure.
Yeah, it really does. But that was what they wanted, and so that's what we're here for.
Another question for Ron. I'm sure you're for this, but I just want to get something from you stating your publicly, what, how do you feel about it?
Well, I feel very comfortable with it. I've been up to Carvalis, seen their test models, where they started right off at the very beginning. And, and this is very, 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 very safe. I mean, I think it's the only nuclear plant where there's no requirement for backup generation. I think that's very, very important. So if a tidal wave comes in and blows over the place, it, they say it's totally safe, but what happened, like it did in Japan? It doesn't need power to keep cool, because they're, again, they're small, using those natural physics to keep it, to run and to cool. And so I think, you know, global warming, whether you agree or not, I think it's something out there. And carbon emissions, I think in the future, we come, will be a very big deal. It could be costly. And so we tie this in to, with our resources, with the natural gas, which are very low. And then I think we need to look into maybe some solars in the future to complement this. And that's what's so nice about these units too, is that they can regulate them up and down very easily. Where cold, right now, you can't do that, they want to sit out there at that baseload. But just dropping down those rod covers, it can reduce that output. And at the 50 megawatt size of generator two, it's, they're not trying to stop a 1,500 megawatt generator and slow it down. It's, it becomes very flexible. So I feel very comfortable with the project. It has taken a long time, but I think that's been a good process. I think it's something that needed to take a long time. I feel very comfortable at this point.
Okay, I don't, I don't see any, any questions, do I? Okay, I think this, we're ready for a motion. Thank you for that presentation. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion on this?
Yeah, there is. Council motion and a roll call.
Is this just simply to enter into this power sales contract?
I believe so. Is that not it? What it is, just to enter into the contract?
The resolution indicates it's a resolution authorizing and approving the carbon-free power project power sales contract with UAMs, with UAMs, municipal power systems, the initial budget and plan of finance for the project and related materials. And those are in that resolution.
So basically, we're just going down the road with this, still?
Yep.
All right, any question? Anybody have any comments or concerns?
I did, you did say that, that, you know, you talked about the safety of it. And I, I mean, I understand a little bit about the process and how it works. But, I mean, it is sitting in so many billion gallons of water, or whatever they said it was, which is, it's a lot of water. But eventually, if that, if there was a catastrophic event, that water would dry up, right?
Yes, and it would still, and it would still be safe.
Yeah, with air cool.
With air cool.
They're, they're smaller, they're, they're cool.
Yeah, they go, so the, within one second, we lose almost 90% of the heat when we stop the fusion. That's, it's small, but see, the heat dissipates very, very quickly. And so the catastrophic concept of boiling the water off, that's an NRC requirement. We have to look at the most catastrophic, because the idea is we lose the water to come out of there. We can sit, still sit there indefinitely in an air-cooled mode without any outside electricity, without raining any more water, and with no operator action. That was a huge finding by the NRC. And that just came out a few months ago, based on the tests. These are, the safest reactor, the NRC's actually said, safest reactor they've ever seen. It orders magnitude in the hundreds of thousands greater than any other. The most bulletproof.
All right, that was just my one concern.
So do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we pass resolution authorizing and approving the carbon-free power project power sales contract with UAMs and the initial budget and plan of finance for the project and related matters.
Yeah, there's a second. Roll call, vote, starting with Councilwoman Hyatt.
I have a hard time voting when I don't understand it completely.
What's your vote? What's your vote?
You can stay.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just standing, if I just want to.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
But thank you. Go on to number eight, Public Carrying Resolution Review and Adopt the Tentative Budget for Fiscal Year 2018 and 2019. Sarah.
Okay, so I'm just going to give you, this, just, okay. Set me to this case. All right, so we're going to just kind of give a 30-foot overview of the budget. You guys all received a copy, you can dive in there. Email me questions, email with me. We can have work sessions on it, but tonight, we're just going to do the 30-foot view and adopt the tentative budget that we can keep working with. This is not final, final. Okay. Sorry. So we're just going to hit these topics real quick, the budget highlights, employees, projects, property tax analysis, and utility rates. So some of the budget highlights, like we discussed earlier, we balance the budget without the new employees. But if you want to add the two new employees that you talked about, the police officer and development services employee, it's going to be up to be about 20% property tax increase. We had to use fund balance to balance the budget. We used $300,000 for the memorial park upgrade, so we can get going on that through the pickleball courts. There's $90,000 in there for the last payment on the fire truck that we purchased a few years ago. And then we have a lot of coils that are leaking in this building that are causing lots of, what's, is it condensation? What's coming out of the coils it's causing?
Yeah, that's water.
Yeah.
Raining inside.
Yes, yes, it's not good. And it's a temporary fix, but it can get us by for a couple of years. So that's what $35,000 is going for. This building is just getting older, as I am. And the sales tax revenue is up, but like we said, the Senate passed a lovely bill where they're going to take $34,000 out of our sales tax revenue. So that, we just wanted to point out, so if you want to include that in the property tax increase, you can go as well.
Can we pass a bill where we're going to take money from them?
I think we should. I'll support it.
I'll second it.
I'll sponsor it. All right, so in order to balance, you want to think that we had to cut, but we cut quite a bit of stuff out. You can see that, so I met with, I sent out an email to the department and said, I can't get this to balance. And they were gracious enough to come in and try to help me cut where they could. And honestly, it's a little bit scary, like for the pool, the natural gas to cut that, because their budget is already pretty tight on stuff. But they thought, you know, let's just cut it and see where things come out. So pool, they cut the natural gas by 2,000, police, they cut quite a bit back. I don't, yeah, it makes me uneasy to cut that much out of the police budget. Like, you can see right there, there's a court security. They removed that part-time position. And right now, they only have, is it one employee at the court, one police officer at the court? Do you want to expand on that a little bit, Brad?
Yeah, we have actually no incoming screening of our people that are coming to the court. So it's basically the only court around here that doesn't have any pre-screen or security check or anything else coming to the court. So we haven't had that, and we haven't had really a problem, only a few times. But the world's changing, and we wanted to secure that, but it just wasn't in the cards to do it right now, to cut.
Yeah, and you can see that we don't pay for the police to clean their uniforms. They just throw them in the washer or don't pay for it themselves. And Brad asked to put that in, but I couldn't fit that in the budget as well, so that's another item. The pool bond payment, what we did with that is we increased the amount that the park impact fee contributes to covering that bond, because our park impact fees are coming in a lot higher than what they have in the past. So we use that to help with that, that's what that is.
And it looks like, from what we've been seeing, they should even keep going now?
Yeah, yep, and there is, we have a park impact fee study. And we went to that to see if there was any kind of requirements or thresholds that we couldn't go above. We didn't see any, but I think we're still going to look into that, make sure we don't break any rules or regulations.
So can the police get a buyout of $15,000 worth of gas?
If the gas stays low.
If it hasn't stayed low, they're going up.
Yeah, that's.
So was the $15,000 the increase over the budget last year, is that what that was, or they cut it back?
Yeah. So what we do is we look at actuals and compare the last few years of the actuals and felt comfortable that we could do that, but that's with the gas prices stay where they've been. But if they don't, we may be coming back and asking council for a budget amendment.
Just get nuclear powered cars.
Yeah. No, that's nice, there's any bicycles.
Horses.
No bicycles until they wanted to come to your house.
By the horses?
And Gulf had a major one in there. They have some really old sprinkler heads that they need to replace. It's hard for them to gauge how much they're watering and control that. And Mark wanted to put that in so we could replace those sprinkler heads. How old are those sprinkler heads, Tracy?
28 years.
They're old.
Some of them 30.
And we had to cut that out, but, you know, these are all themes that need to be addressed.
So this is everything that you've cut out? So have we seen the insurance rates and what's happening there?
Yes, so Melanie got, you're talking about health insurance, right?
Right.
Yes, we funding up those back, and it was about an eight and a half percent after trying to tweak things. But overall, that's like $20,000 that it saved us. So it's not much.
So how much more are we paying then?
I'll, I have a slide for that later. I don't remember off the top of my head, but I can show you that. So here's just the highlights, here's the surplus or deficit. You can see that the general fund, that was basically a zero budget, $296 just there. And everything else, we managed to balance. Are there any questions on those? Here's your total expenditures broken down by fund. You can see that we've got $44 million total budget. 3.8 of that is included for bonding for our two water projects. Any questions on those? Okay. You can, I broke this down so you see, people always want to know, where's this all going? Is it employees, is it operating? But you can see 30% is going to operating, 30% personnel, 20% capital expenditures, and so on.
Any questions?
Yes.
Is that normal?
Uh huh, yes. Most, a lot of the cities, you will see that personnel expenditures are the biggest piece of the pie.
In any business.
Yeah, in any business. Yep, it's, yeah. For the general fund, a lot of people like to know, where are all of my tax dollars going? Where's this all going? And you can see that 23% goes to the police department, like Brad just said. You know, it'd be nice if they only had to work eight hours a day, but they've got to man everything 24 hours a day, 365 days a week, or a year, a week. Sometimes I feel like that. I feel like I've got 365 days in this week. But that's just kind of where everything falls out in the general fund. Any questions? I'll just keep going, feel free to interrupt. So here's where we get to the employees. Tracy, you can see right there, the health insurance for this year. For the general fund, it increased 81,000. Citywide, it's 156. So that citywide does include the general fund. But the hardest part for me was balancing the general fund. So when I say that it made like a $20,000 difference, that was, or 10,000, that was the general fund portion, part of that. So I always look at the general fund to balance. That's where I use property taxes to balance that. We did increase seasonal wages, you can see down there, it was about 30,000, 50,000. So 30,000 for the general fund, 50,000 citywide. And we did put in there a 4% placeholder for performance-based wage increases. We talked about this today in the department head meeting, and the 4% is for exceptional employees, those who go above and beyond. The 2% is you meet expectations. You come here, you do what's asked. So we have a scale. Melanie has given us a new evaluation, ways to evaluate employees. And I think it'll be really good, it'll help to take out some of the subjectivity. You know, you sometimes have employees that say they just don't like me, and, you know, they have it out for me type of thing. But it'll be good this year. And I think it's a good way to motivate employees to go above and beyond, go the extra mile.
So on that, Sarah, you have 4% there, so is that 4% across the board? So it could be lower than that, because some are going to get two, but maximum is four? So if somebody can't get five to offset, the ones that get two?
Right.
So, so this is going to be high, probably high.
Yes, this will be high.
Okay.
Yep. And we talked about that, we said, you know, it'd be nice to have, give someone 5% and, you know, but you'd be surprised, but I, there are some people who don't watch their budgets very closely. And I would be worried that someone would blow their budget and, yeah, I just don't feel comfortable with that. But we did increase the traditional plan, how much the employee has to pay. So the city in the past just paid 93% of the plan. We are now proposing that the city pay 90% of the traditional plan. But the high deductible HSA plan, we kept the same, the city will pay 94% of that plan. And the HSA plan is a great plan. The city contributes $2,400 to their HSA account for that. It's, I've done the numbers. Yeah, it's incredible. I've been on HSA for five, six years, and I love HSAs. And Kate had a major accident last year, and we still work fine, so.
I used to go use my HSA every year.
Yeah. Yeah. So some of the projects we have included, we've got the general plans and the master plans. We've created all those plans we're working on. We're going to upgrade the tennis courts memorial park. The water, we've got lots of good projects that we're trying to get on that. We have two bottom ones, the 16-inch and the 24-inch. They are projects that we'll have to bond for, that will certainly be ones that will help fix the PI pressure problem and also help us for growth. And wastewater, we're still continuing to save for the treatment plant upgrade. It's, we budget 300,000, but if we have leftovers, we try to put whatever we can into that fund and save for when we have to upgrade our sewer plant. And they just continually clean sewer lines and try to stay on top of that. We had a sewer backup not too long ago that cost the city so many, well, our insurance company. So we try to be proactive on that. They do need a jet truck. So a jet truck costs about $500,000. So Jeff wants to start saving for that as much as he can. So Jeff wants to start saving for that as much as he can to, so we don't have to grip and strafe and, you know, borrow from that revolving loan fund and let nobody else get some equipment and vehicles.
A jet truck, is that used all the time, or is that something we could get with a couple other cities and share the costs or?
Do we have one already?
We have it and it's old. It's getting...
It'd be tough because they're used in all cities pretty good.
Yeah. I would say that they're used on a daily basis, but I'm just guessing. I know where, my husband used to work in the storm during it, and they used it every day. And it's a valuable asset to have. Solid waste, we're still making payments on that compactor, which I, it was a great investment for the city to help save space in that landfill. And Kent has talked to some of you. He wants to upgrade scales, but we also need to start thinking about getting new equipment. Teresa brought that up at one of our meetings about a grinder and other equipment that we need. And so Kent would like to have that more discussion to determine if we need to put off upgrading the scales and start saving to get that grinder and other equipment we need.
I think that's where you mentioned that reduction equipment would go, take four tons of waste and reduce it down one ton.
It would be a great investment, kind of like the compactor. It's, it helps extend the life of that landfill. So storm, they have, they're going to purchase a land for retention basin. They've got to do split compliance, that's about fifty thousand, and then keep working on the Ridgely detention basin. Electric, they're going to replace some distribution lines. They're going to try to get new streetlights and then upgrade the city lights here to LED lighting. How about that? I know, some day these will be gone, all over costing.
They're not going to be orange forever.
Yeah. And then B and C projects, these are your classic C fund that comes from the state. He, Kent is going to fix, you know, down at Utah Avenue, the downtown where it's kind of just out, you go from Tunay down to A-1. Yeah, so he's going to be working on that. And then we got some grant money from CDVG, I believe about a hundred and thirty thousand to help us with that, five hundred West Utah Avenue project.
That'll help with the students at Taylor School as well, can help them stand on the road, on the, off the road, off the road and on sidewalks.
We knew it. So the revolving loan that we have set up, we purchase vehicles for departments and we're the bank for these departments. It saves us on interest. It's a, it's a great vehicle for us to get vehicles and equipment. So this year, we are going to purchase a ten-wheeler for B and C fund, a small bucket truck for the electric department, a half-ton for facilities, a mower for the grounds, and golf carts, which will get Tracy all new golf carts because he's got some old ones and trying to up our image, like you said, so...
Can we get those supercharged? You want little Ferraris?
Can we paint planes on them too, Tracy?
He'll do it.
Hey, so property tax, a lot of people get confused when they see their property tax bill and they say, two thousand dollars? And they hear we're going to increase it twenty percent. So they think, gosh, that's four hundred dollars? What are you doing? But we only get ten percent of that pie. And I can't stress this enough, no matter how much I put this on here, people still don't get that we only get ten percent of the property taxes that are assessed.
So when we up it, we just...
It's twenty percent of that ten percent?
Yes. Yes.
So you're upping it for everything else, including legal school district?
No, no, no.
No, no. Just Payson.
Just Payson.
But they, they cut of that up.
No, no.
No, no.
They take that cut out. I believe that's nicer.
Yeah, so if you look at your property tax statement, it breaks out each one of those. You can see exactly what...
I know, I...
And most people...
It's just patient's portion that's being...
Yeah, most people don't look at that, but it shows you exactly what, what it was and then what they proposed. You can see if they're upping it, but a lot of people just throw that away and don't want to take time to look at it.
So, so you say a twenty percent increase? They tried to do this with something else and it was a major increase, when they said it was one percent was related. So what would that entail of the whole spectrum? Is it, do you know that number by chance? So...
So here's our certified tax rate information. So right now, we charge point zero zero one-two-eight on our total property value in Payson. And that brings in one point one-four-three million to Payson City. And you can see over to the right, the residents of Payson, if their house is appraised at two hundred and fifty thousand, the taxable value is only a hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred. So the property tax is a hundred and seventy-six dollars that they're paying to Payson City. So if you want to hire the police and development services, you would have to increase it about fifteen percent. And that would equate to a twenty-six dollar a year increase, or a two dollar and twenty-three cent increase, monthly increase, to residents who have a home that's taxable value a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Is that what you were talking about? No?
No, that's all right. So like, right now, it's ten point six percent. Would it be ten point eight percent of the overall kind of thing?
Very, very minimum.
It's kind of just so that people realize that that's, it's really not a large portion of it.
Yeah, it might go down if the school turns, it goes up higher, we might go down to ten point four.
Yeah.
Because...
That's true. They're, they're trying to bond for a little bit of money.
Yep. So it's, it's, our piece of the pie will stick around, ten percent. So any questions on this? On the things, and I put the average of Utah County, just so you can see where the, if we were to bump up to be right there at the average, that would bring in about four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars into our general fund.
So do we know what the tax rate is yet?
Nope. They have until June second, I believe, by state. It's quite the process. The county securer has to send it up to the state, state has to do their magic, send it back to the county. And so, yeah, we probably won't get that till the end of May, first of June. So here's the comparison of all the cities in Utah County. You can see we're at the bottom third right now. If we were to increase it to where we would need to hire those two new physicians, we would bump up quite a bit. We'd be closer to the average point. And here's just so you can see the rates. Sometimes people like to see the rates. All right, so the utility rates. I have proposed a four-dollar rate increase on pressurized irrigation. Because right now, we don't qualify to bond because our debt coverage ratio is not there. Yeah. So I proposed a four-dollar rate increase for pressurized irrigation, a fifty cent storm increase, so we can start doing projects. And we'll probably, probably have to bond next year for a big project that Kent has to do. Um, I can't remember what it is, but I have it here. I'll get it. But we need to start thinking ahead on what we can do to improve our storm drain system. And then the rest of them, we just need to do the standard CPI increase, which is about two point one percent right now. And you can see it's about seventy cents for wastewater, twenty-four cents for garbage, forty-one cents for culinary, and the total overall with all of those, it's a five dollar eighty-five cent increase per month for residents.
How many years have we been doing the CPI increase now?
Um, I think they kind of have done it off and on, but they started doing it.
Well, we started doing it about six years ago, but some years we didn't do it, some years we did part of it, not all. We haven't done it for like, for the power department for about four or five years.
What does CPI stand for?
Continue price index.
The inflation.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And when bonding, when it comes to take it out, the rating agencies like to look at that and see that you're being proactive and trying to keep up with the CPI and not falling behind the scales. So I think it's a smart thing to do, just so we can stay here. We wouldn't have had to do these fifteen dollar rate increases, six dollar, had we maybe done this all along every year. It's kind of like our property taxes. Had we just kept doing little by little, it would be such a big hit. So I don't want to get back to that trend.
People have to pay, but the fact is, is everything's gone up.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just like at my store, people still want the same price, and yet my, my costs have tripled.
Yeah.
And it's the same thing with the city, and they need to understand that, that we've tried and tried to give them, but now they have to kind of pay for it because it's gone up too high.
And we are very sensitive. I mean, gosh, I have family that lives off the social security and this would, you know, it's, it's hard for them to try to make ends meet. So I, I understand that, but I also don't want the city to end up not being able to provide water lines to give water or sewer lines to flush your toilets.
And everybody's broke.
Yeah, right.
So does the CPI always two point one percent, or does it match inflation?
It matches inflation.
So it'll change from year to year depending on inflation?
Yeah, it has. Some years it's been one point two or one point six.
One thing about it too, is social security gets CPI increase every year too. So they're getting an increase, even though I know it's hard for them these days.
Yeah.
And the Medicare insurance goes up to equal all of that rate.
Yes, it does.
It's a come and go.
It's just, I, I don't even see it, yeah.
Okay, so here's just a little background. Travis is going to go into these, but we've got these projects that we need to do. I'll let Travis go into detail on that. Here's just my ten-year projection of the waterfront balance. If we don't do anything, you can see that it gets pretty ugly really fast. So the four-dollar rate increase gives us about ten years to, you know, keep reassessing. This is a living, breathing, working document that I'll just continually analyze our rates and our fund balance and see what we got. And the water rate analysis, you can see that if we do the four-dollar rate increase, we're just slightly above average. And this will probably change because Logan just did a huge water increase and Provo City is still doing more, so people are still increasing rates. So you'll see next year, I guarantee the average will bump right up again to... And here's where we'd be if we do the four dollar and forty-one cent rate increase, because this water cost includes both the culinary and PI. This is a Provo, uh, they do, this is from Provo City, they do the utility rate study and then they just share it with me. Saves me a lot of time. So the wastewater cost, if we increase it seventy cents, you can see that we're slightly above average. We won't change a position, we'll just go up a little bit. So we'll still be right there next to average. The storm drain cost, we're below average right now, but if we bump up fifty cents, we'll still be below average, we just move up two spots. And the garbage can, we are at eleven dollars and thirty cents, and we'll go up to eleven fifty-four, so we'll be slightly above average. So you can see we're right there in the average on all the utility rates. Any questions? So your budget includes all that, I mean, well, I have, the other one you received doesn't include that because I sent you one before some of these changes, but I will include that if that's the ten-year budget you would like to adopt. And it is a working document, so once you guys adopt it, it doesn't mean it's final and that's it. I think that's different for you guys to continue to work on.
So if we just adopted it as it is now, that can always be added in later?
Yes.
Or deleted.
So if you want to add in those changes that I proposed, the rate increases, I can update that. If not, you can do it later or not do it.
My two cents is, I think, I keep saying we need the economic development director because I think that person that supports free business and that we need to get the tax stuff, I think we can afford not to have them, especially after listening to that guy in St. George. I mean, those people know what they're doing. And the police officer, I mean, I know it's nationwide problem, it's not just a Payson problem with finding the police to come in here. We've got to find some incentives that are going to incentivize them to want to come to Payson. You know, you got, everybody here in staff, they need to be thinking of ways that we could, to do that. It's just like school teachers right now, and they gave them that two and a half percent raise up the granite because there's no school teachers. And they're actually giving them another percent raise on top of that. So it's, this is what I can kind of see is going to happen, is you're going to have to start paying them a lot more because nobody wants to do that job. People aren't going into that job anymore. So we got to find a way to entice them. Yeah, we're probably going to have to pay them more than we pay other people, but that's the way things are going. So, you know, that's my two cents.
Unless there's other discussion, are we ready for a motion?
Public hearing.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Okay.
And Melanie has information about wages and benefits. I don't know if you want to hear from her or do a work session with her, but she's got some good information regarding that.
We probably need to have a work session because I know Teresa's state economic development director, development services director, Travis's department has looked at, you know, maybe a development engineer. So we kind of need to get on the same page so that we know what direction we're in.
Wait a minute.
Are we ready for a motion for open public, the public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing.
I have a second. Okay, we have a second. It's been seconded, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The public hearing is open. Step up to the mic, state your name and address and speak clearly, and again, try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Okay, lacking that, motion to close public hearing.
It's moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Counsel discussion on what we heard.
Yeah, from my perspective, I'd like to do a truth in taxation. I'd probably put it at twenty-five percent increase. And, but knowing that's be our maximum, we don't have to increase it at all, but at least it gives us some, because we've talked about some other things that might be important, like the team pace and things like that, that might be important that we want to look at. Maybe we won't do the people, but at least it gives us some flexibility, but we don't have to, but it gives us that opportunity.
Any other discussion?
What's the proposed increase rate now?
I have, well, I don't have...
For those two employees, it's fifteen percent.
It was fifteen.
Fifteen point two. Fifteen point two.
But if we take it up to twenty-five percent, we don't have to go that high, but we can't say, oh, we discovered something, go higher, or we got to stay with what we put.
You have, we have to inform the county that that's the ceiling of what we propose. We don't have to up to that, you can't, you can't go past that, but you can go lower. You can do zero percent if you want.
And I'm putting us out in the public media, but if you go up higher and then come down, it seems easier for people.
Well, it's realistic. It's a realistic way to do it, so.
So we need a motion to do the...
We need a motion to approve the tentative budget, if you want how she presented it. I would request if you, as you make a motion to approve that tentative budget, that you put in there that you're wanting a truth of taxation hearing, that we can notify the county.
And the twenty-five percent?
Which is twenty-five percent. Yeah.
And with, how I presented it, if that's how you want to do it, then I can update it and get it on the website so public can...
So that's, that's the motion we need.
Okay.
You got it?
I'll make a motion that we approve the tentative budget with a truth in taxation hearing and with a proposed maximum twenty-five percent property tax increase.
I'll second that. Okay. Been seconded. Roll call vote starting with Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a personal privilege. Do Utah Jazz beat the Houston Rockets?
I'm kidding. I'm just kidding. Really.
I'd beat them out of it.
Oh, I'd...
Sorry, did I ruin your, your DDR?
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Yeah.
I just played, we watched a game. I got a little video from my son, he might be my wife in New York.
One sixteen to one oh eight.
All right.
Joe Ingles had twenty-seven points. Nobody in my class is going to name anybody who plays for the Jazz. It's too sad. Did we get passed the vote? Yeah, we did. We passed it. So moving on to number nine. Waiting for the vote. We've already seen amendments.
Resolution amendments to the pre-scheduled water rates.
So I will make this very short, I hope. Um this is just, I'm going to show you these quick couple drawings that this is those projects that are raising the four dollar rate. This is the one that without doing this, those two developments on Arrowhead Trail will not have any PI. When we ran the model without doing this, that pressure actually went negative about there. So that meant they wouldn't get any water.
That mean ours would go up if we're sucking water from them?
No, no. But you can see, I mean, it's hard to see, but there's about fifty-nine hundred feet of pipe that we've got to put in, twenty-four inch pipe. That's what's driving this one point eight million dollar project, then obviously got to fix the road. And then this one, the only difference on this one is instead of doing the twenty-four inch pipe where it says that we're going to do sixteen, just because Brett and I were afraid if we do twenty-four, it'll drain the pond too fast and then with two lines coming out, we won't be able to keep up with that, so. This one will help fix a lot of pressure complaints that we get because it'll allow the school and the ballparks to to really water off that dedicated line and not really affect all the residents, but you know, that's another almost two million dollar project right there just to do that, so.
But but aren't the residents watering at different times in the parks and the schools? They water during the day, we water at night?
In theory.
In theory, but.
They did, because that's why the pressure release was.
It it hasn't worked out. Uh we've tried, I mean, I've seen the schools watering when the residents are because they complain about that it's not a good time to water during the day and it's a nightmare to police because you know, we got to, we we try to tell them and it doesn't seem to change it.
Well, the problem with the schools is that they're water, they're controlled from the district office, you know.
And what this would allow is everyone can water at night when it's more effective and no one would be watering during the day like we used to. And that would, and that would fix a lot better because then we're not watering when it's ninety degrees outside and it's just evaporating fast.
I'm, I'm a little concerned with, let's drop it to a sixteen because we don't want to drain the pond, which is understandable. But if future growth is going to facilitate the need for a twenty-four inch line, can't we just put a PRV on it and not put as much pressure down there and allow it to drain out? What's the cost difference between a sixteen to a twenty-four inch pipe? Because the installation cost is ninety percent of that, I'm pretty sure.
About three hundred thousand dollars.
In materials? I don't know, is it one point two million dollar project?
Well, the problem is, is the the pond is not big enough to handle that, but.
Right, but what if we put in a pond that can handle it and reroute the twenty-four inch line to the larger pond? Down the line is what I'm saying. I don't want to band-aid something that needs to be remedied.
But this doesn't really affect any future growth area.
Uh that's easy to say. I live in an old neighborhood. We've got thirty-two new homes in progress. So it's.
We spent thirty thousand dollars with a consultant to get this answer.
And they came up with sixteen inches sufficient.
If you want to wait for another year and a half till we get the best. I I that's the best we could come up with for what we had and that cost us thirty grand that we did not have budgeted for, nor did we have. We just, we got, we tried to find an answer, so this was the best we could come up with. Is there other options? Probably, but this.
We are going to have to have another pond.
No, and I do understand that. And and I'm not, I'm not trying to be contentious. I just want to fill it out and see where we're at.
We looked at a third pond and it'd be on the east side of Pea Mountain, probably, and there the Highline Canal is where we've kind of we haven't bought any property. Obviously, we haven't designed anything, but that was kind of tentatively where we looked to get one. And we could feed that, whether it was out of the Highline or out of the Central Utah Line when it comes through.
Right.
That that was some options, but yeah.
Is that, is the Central Utah Line, does it have enough pressure we can drag feed off of it, or?
Yeah, it has.
It will, so would that save us the cost of of a pond? If we had a line sufficient, say the twenty-four inch are coming across there, we could cut it.
It's something to look at, but yeah, it has hundreds of PSI.
I, I, yeah, it's, it's more PSI than we really want. But if it saved us some money, if there's ways to reduce it, I know that, I'm I'm just trying to fill it out. This is something that I've tried to get all this information and here it is right here in front of me, but I've got to decide on it, and so I'm just kind of.
I, I mean, our, unfortunately, our system was undersized when it was, you know, it's
Just it was.
Four and six inch lines. I can't fix that without ripping every single road apart and replacing that, but this will be a, this, this, I don't think this is considered a band-aid. I mean, it's not probably a hundred percent, but it's it's a pretty good fix for what we've had issues with.
If we get CUP water, then it'd be very expensive. We're going to have to.
Yeah, but at the rate that Highline and that keeps raising our rates, it might be pretty comparable in the near future, so I I I mean.
Where we're headed there.
It's all, it's, water's going to get very expensive.
CUP keeps raising theirs too.
You know, the rate that we're paying will definitely go up.
Well, there's, there was a meeting I went to with the, with the mayors and I think it's, what was, two hundred dollars per acre foot is about, about what it is. And then in the same breath, he said, Salt Lake City, if you guys don't buy this water, Salt Lake City will scoop it up because they're paying five and six hundred dollars for the same amount of acre feet.
Yeah, I think like Eagle Mountain and Saratoga Springs are paying, they're paying a lot, lot more than we are to get their water out there.
We do have to prepare for that because as soon as the last leg of the Central Utah project is finished, which it's it's now going through Spanish Fork, it'll come to Salem and us, but once it's there and they have the ability to deliver the water, then we cities need to make that, because we're, we're under contract with them for ten thousand acre feet. And pacing's a part of that, but as soon as they have the ability to get it to us, uh we have to start paying. And I know for us, it's about a million dollar hit a year. I know Spanish Fork, it's probably a couple of million dollar hits, so we talked about that with the other cities, Mountain Eagle, we'll probably have more discussions on that. But it is something that's going to hit us in the next, probably the next five years when that project's all the way through.
Just so you're aware, this, the eighth of May, uh Mayor of Spanish Fork has asked me and Mayor of Salem to sit down with the CUP and they'll give us a briefing and I'll bring that back to you guys.
Yeah, they're, they're anticipating in the next year or two to have the, the CUP line up to basically our boundary on the east side. And then a couple of years after that, then it would actually go through Pason, so. I don't know when they'll actually put water in it for sure because they've got to get it all obviously built, but you know, we probably in the next five, six years could possibly be starting to pay for that.
Which we probably need to start looking at what we charge our people to use that.
It's kind of like the sewer plan where we, we're putting money away for that upgrade. We probably ought to start putting some money away to.
And maybe, and maybe we need to look at, like what other, I, I mean, I know down in Delta, they have to bid for their water every year and, you know, it came up to three hundred dollars an acre foot. And they don't even know if they're going to get it. But they still have to pay for it, so it's, I mean, I don't, I hope it doesn't go that high. What I'm saying is, we have to start looking like not just around Utah County, but like statewide to see what different areas are paying. Because we really don't pay that much for our water. When I've had to go down there and pay three hundred dollars for an acre foot and it's twenty dollars here, that's a huge difference.
You get a lot better rate than we do, by the way, so.
Well, I have to pay, I have things on top of it too.
No, but, yeah, they have their different classes and we, we unfortunately get the highest rate, so.
So is this, this isn't to do with the approved um and or the, the plots we did out in Arrowhead Trail?
This one is.
This one is?
This one, we can actually, if we update our, which we're working on, getting our impact fee updated, we can actually use impact fees to help pay for this one.
Okay.
But this one, we.
What is that? So is this, so is it coming out of the lower pond?
It, no, it's just tying it into an existing line.
So where's the twenty-four inch line going from here up?
So it ends up by the church on Arrowhead. And then that's where the developer would pick it up and put a PRV in and then run it out the rest of the way on Arrowhead.
So the, this trunk line just runs down there and bypasses all the existing system, doesn't tie into it anywhere?
And part of the reason the line's as big as it is is because we don't have any way right now to loop out there on Arrowhead. If there was a way to either cross the interstate or come back down on the east and tie in, the line could probably get smaller, but then that's a lot, we've got to go put another you know, million dollars or more into it because to get another line that's big enough to help feed it, that would shrink this, but we're on a big dead end line is what's kind of driving this.
So where does the, the twenty-four inch line originate is what I'm asking. You got to pull water from somewhere, I mean.
Yeah.
It ends at the Arrowhead Church, but where does it start?
And it comes out, it'll come out of the lower pond.
The lower pond, but it's, it's one point seven million, why is the other one two point three?
It's longer.
It comes out of the upper pond, it's farther to go? Okay.
And bigger, I mean, you know, not as, not as big a line overall, but there's just more of it.
Like, I guess the, what we're really looking at is the pressurized irrigation water rate? Is that what we're?
Yeah, that, that, these are both PI projects, so that's why the rate is only going to the PI instead of splitting it between the culinary and the PI, because these are strictly for that. And like Sarah said, without bonding, are we to bond even, we can't do it without raising the rates because of our debt ratio. So these wouldn't, these rates wouldn't go into effect until July first. But we just wanted to be able to present them.
Well, isn't a lot of this being uh just passed on from what the Highlines raise their rates, so we're just passing them on, right?
No, this is just to do these two projects.
Oh, I'm looking at these rates for pressurized irrigation, so that's to just do these projects.
The four dollars is just.
Oh, I'm talking about this talks of, this, what's on the resolution is raising the pressurized irrigation rates, it looks like to me from two fifty-two for a half acre lot to three hundred and thirty.
That's what I.
It's four dollars a month.
Okay.
I thought, I didn't see the resolution, I didn't look at it, so I, I obviously don't know.
Four dollars a month is uh forty-eight dollars.
Because this says it goes from twenty-one dollars a month to twenty-seven, one goes from thirty-two to anyway, so that's what I'm looking at.
Oh, it might, it probably, it's probably due because we charge a different rate based on the lot. Like if you get a bigger lot, that's probably what you're looking at.
Look at the smaller, the lowest one, it's four dollars, I think, for each one.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you have like a half acre lot or whatever, it's, the rate is higher on that than what it is for just a smaller residential lot.
So basically, that four dollars will go to pay for the system.
Yeah.
That we're bonding for.
These two products.
It'll be the, the, yeah, okay.
But basically, will it be being paid back from the impact fees out?
The, the first project would on Arrowhead, yes, but not, not on this. And then, you know, we need to, we need to do more meters. The, the estimate that we got down at the Water Users Conference was probably anywhere from five million to almost eight million to have all those meters put in. From the cost other cities are seeing to have those PI meters put in per meter. So at some point, we're going to, it's, I mean, everything's going to cost us.
Why don't we build in the third, on, what's the, the five years, ten years, twenty years?
Hopefully after we have the master plan, we'll have a better answer for that, because I, it all, it's all going to be driven by growth.
The pond as well. I, I don't know, I guess I kind of struggle a little bit. I'm at the larger end. I have a one acre lot. And so my, my rate's going to go up higher, which is a little bit of a concern. Where twenty-five percent of my, my lot is not even used. Like I don't put any irrigation water on it, and there's probably an additional fifteen percent that's watered by the city's creek that runs through. But yeah, my rates are higher despite the fact that nobody knows how much water I use.
When you can pay for everybody's meters, we'll solve your problem.
And just as a side note, there is a way for you to apply through the city to actually get that reduced if you can prove you're not watering it. There is a mechanism designed for that, so.
Okay.
So that's something you can work with Brett and Cheryl on, if that's something you're interested in doing, so. I mean, obviously, we have, we have to take, you know, we have to go look at it, but you know, some people will tell you they're not watering it, then they are and so we're just going to try to get their rate. But I'm just saying, there is that mechanism.
There, there is, I mean, okay. I, I just, as a general rule, I'm not opposed to paying for the PI. I'm not, I I'm good with it, I'm just, just trying to get as much information out of this little meeting as I can, so.
But if you don't do the first project, you might as well have denied that project tonight on Arrowhead, because we can't service it.
Oh, no, I'm not denying any of this. I just, I just like to see a little bit more water pressure at my house. That's all I'm after.
Okay, okay, are we ready, are we ready for a motion? I would like to make a motion that we put in a five inch line from the, to Brett's house from the pond.
I deny that motion.
No second.
No second. I think that's a lot of water. The last rainstorm we had, the big one, my ditch got plugged, the city watered my lawn, put about seven inches of water in my backyard. It was good for a while. I haven't turned my sprinkler on yet.
You all have it, it's been raining pretty good out there.
Yeah. Okay, we're ready for a real, real motion. Or emotion, whatever. Anybody?
I move that we accept the new fee increases on the water rates for both of those lines.
For the pressurized irrigation.
For the press, oh, for the PI.
Did we do it right?
That would be a second.
We got, we got a second? We, we're seconded, okay. Roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Hyatt.
Aye.
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 It passes. Okay. Uh F.
Oh, sorry, Mayor.
Do you want to do?
I was just going to walk you through the next part, because so.
Please, please do.
So we, we uh, we need to go into a closed session. There's two, two parts of the closed session. There's one part that's a potential litigation. The second part is some property purchase in the RDA, so we have two portions, portions of closed session, the RDA, and that's, we can make a motion to go into a closed session for the regular session and the RDA. We'll go take care of that. We need to come back then in the RDA, and there's the tentative budget for the RDA, and there's also the parcel. It's parcel two in the business part that we've talked about, the fire emergen- can't remember the name. By the, it's just the emergency.
Emergency zone.
Emergency zone, we talked about in previous meetings. That's on the agenda for approval, and then we can adjourn. So the motion right now, if the council would do that, is to go into a short closed session in the regular meeting and the RDA meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn to a closed session.
Okay.
You didn't say short.
For the city council and.
And the, okay, what marks that?
We've got a motion, it's been seconded. The roll call vote, starting with Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Carries.
It won't take long, so.